I will call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, March 20th at 2023. We will go with the roll call.
Adam Giegus.
Here.
Richard Eriksen.
Present.
Sean Spinski.
Here.
John Glenn.
Here.
Mitch O'Kale.
Here.
Lama Kiefer.
Here.
Nellie Peter.
Here.
Dean Peterson.
Here.
Michael Murray.
All right, as a reminder, make sure we're using our microphones since one of our members is on the phone as well as Shane. We'll move on to the Approval of the Minutes section of the agenda. We have Agenda Item One, Approval of Minutes from February 13th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion by Dean and a second by Nellie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to the Reports section of the agenda. We have Parks and Recreation with Agenda Item Number Two. Which one? All right, yeah, I guess, all right, we will, if counsel is amenable, we'll jump ahead to Agenda Item Number Eight. The, under the General section, the request by Jennifer Sasser for consideration of granting her beverage operator's license. Any objections?
No.
No.
No objection. Mitch, you good with that?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. All right, so we will jump to Agenda Item Eight, Request by Jennifer Sasser for consideration of granting her beverage operator's license. Chief or Becky, did you want to hop in with any information ahead of time, or?
I can talk.
Sure.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
All right, so Ms. Sasser applied for the operator's license. And as you guys know, governed by city ordinance, what I can do as far as recommend for approval or denial. She ran into an issue in July of '22 where there was a battery resisting an officer on a disorderly conduct case. At the time, her VAC was .164, and so that case was open. And then in lieu of staying in jail, they give people bond. You can, you can get out on bond. And she was on bond and had a couple more incidents where she was consuming alcohol and was referred for bail jumping. So those two cases are open right now. I believe she has plea agreements on March 10th. And then whatever the judge decides from there. Since that time, February 13th, she was referred, at least have not been prosecuted yet by this attorney's office. They're sitting there waiting for their attention. She was referred for two counts of bail jumping on February 13th. Alcohol was involved in that. She refused the PBT. And then on February 19th, referred again for bail jumping for violating the provisions of her bond. At that time, her VAC was a .082. Now, she does have two open bond conditions right now that prohibit her from entering taverns, bars, or liquor stores for any purpose. Okay, so normally, if you have employment somewhere, a judge will allow specifically for you to enter for work purposes. This judge on both sets of bonds said you can't enter at all, can't be there. Okay, so that would be an issue at least until April 10th. And then if there's probation assigned to her through Circuit Court, she may have rules from her probation officer that she can't enter taverns still too, which is common. So that we don't know. What I do know is that our ordinance prohibits any non-felony alcohol-related convictions or pending charges within the last 12 months. So we hit that threshold, which is my recommendation for going now. Now, Ms. Sasser came and spoke to me at the police department. I think she's in a troubled time in her life, needs a job. This is what she does, she bartends. So I sympathize with that as well, but, you know, I don't know. I guess that's up to you folks to listen to what she has to say and make a decision on it. Anything I can elaborate on for you guys?
Can you define bail jumping? I see it in all kinds of.
Yeah, bail jumping, so when you, when you get arrested and you go to jail, they typically don't keep you there. They will give you what's called bond. And bond will, there may be a curfew on it, but there's always no further criminal acts. Very typical to not be able to consume alcohol if alcohol was part of why you're in jail. Same with drugs, things like that. If you violate the provisions of that bond, so they'll release you when you go back out in public and you just have a set of rules. Maybe you can't drive a car, maybe you can't consume alcohol, you can't do whatever, but if you, if you violate the bond, that's called bail jumping.
Okay, that's, that's what.
So it's, it's a separate charge. So if you went to jail on a felony and they gave you rules that you can't break when they release you, if you violate that, there's a felony bail jumping. Same with misdemeanor. So Ms. Sasser's would be misdemeanor original charge, and then when we violate the bond, it's additional misdemeanor charges. Did I clear that up?
Yeah, because I see it all the time, and it just means you're violating the rules of your bond.
Of what a judge puts on you.
It could be weapons, drugs, alcohol, could be whatever, whatever the rules are, curfew, time.
Yeah.
Places, choke, agent victims, all kinds of.
Yep, yep.
All right, any other questions for Chief on the city side of things on this one? All right, Chief, Ms. Sasser, you here today? You're coming up.
Hi.
Hello.
Oh, that sounds so horrible. My name is Jennifer Sasser. My daughter, who was nine at the time, and I moved from Georgia to Toma in 2013 due to my then-husband's job. My daughter had a real hard time with the move from family and friends, and I promised her that I would not move her again until she graduated. And I kept my promise. She graduated May 22nd, May 2022 at Toma High School. She's now married to the love of her life, whom she met in Toma, and has moved to Arizona. I am now not only empty nester, but I'm doing all of this on my own. 2018, my then-husband's job took him to Montana, and then 2020, he filed for divorce. And since 2020, I've had to overcome many obstacles. I was forced to sell my home in 2021. And last year, around the time of my arrest, I was displaced. I was displaced and almost homeless. And now I'm currently finding another eviction. The charges that I'm facing are due to a toxic ex-boyfriend whom I have no communication with anymore, and of course, the drinking. I do believe that these charges will be dropped. And due to an entire life of past traumas, alcohol's been my vice at night to help me sleep and has also been the only reasons for my run-ins with the law. I am currently on mood stabilizers now that help me sleep. I'm applying for my bar license for the Cranberry Country Lodge Bar. I'm also a licensed Realtor, online influencer, and my passion is to serve others. It keeps my mind busy and helps me make connections and new friends, and I'm very good at what I do. I'm a hard worker, and I'm just trying to find stability, peace, and of course, money to cover my bills. The charges I'm facing, although alcohol was involved, was a misunderstanding. I've been trying to move on with my life, but continue, life just continues to throw curveballs at me. December 31st, my paid-off vehicle was totaled at the intersection of Pizza Hut. Due to my credit being destroyed, I now have a $600 a month car payment. And as I mentioned before, I'm fighting an eviction which was served me on February 8th of 2023, which drove me to the alcohol again. And then I also found out I had to have major surgery scheduled May 11th and need this income to save for my time off. And all I'm trying to do is survive peacefully somehow and not have any more encounters with the law. I literally go to work, come home, eat and sleep. And the last two encounters with the law officers were on my days off, and they didn't even have anything to do with me. But I got caught. I mean, I turned to the alcohol and I got caught. I am proud to say that since speaking with the chief and, you know, knowing and realizing what I have to do, I, I picked myself back up and I'm proud to say that I haven't ran to alcohol since. And I'm facing my obstacles head on, and I'm just ready to get back to work. And if you could just give me a chance, I will not disappoint you. I just want to be successful, and, and I know I will. And people ask me, like, why? Why stay in Wisconsin? Why Toma? Because I love it. And I love the community. And the funny thing is, back in the 90s, 1430 on a beeper was metal, "I love you" and love. And I, I just, it's just been boof, boof, boof. And, but it's made me realize that alcohol isn't the choice. Although, the funny thing about it, me serving that alcohol keeps me from drinking because it keeps me busy, it keeps me not by myself at home because I'm out there serving others.
All right, thank you. That's a difficult story. Any questions from the committee here? Gaps to fill and anything like that?
I have a question for you. Why do you feel like you need a bartender's license when there are other jobs in the community to where you would not need a bartender's license?
Because there was a miscommunication. I didn't know the owner of, of, the pub. I've been working there since October, and he, and I guess he thought I had a bar license, but I didn't know I had to have a bar license. And so I've been there since October, and it's just been my home, and I have to have a bar license there. At the Cranberry Pub, I guess, because I'm there, but I mean, I, I'm, yeah, I mean, I run, I run it.
Okay, so then, in past experience from bartending, what would stop you after a shift? Like, say you work a shift, and I know when I'm out and about and I observe it, you see a bartender. They get done with the shift and they'll go and they'll sit at the other side of the bar, they'll sit down and have a drink. What prevents you from doing that?
Because when I get out of there, it's usually pretty late, and I want to just go home. I'm tired. It gets me, I've done my job, and then I'm tired, and then I just want to go home.
Because it just kind of seems kind of frivolous, you know, you're kind of defeating the purpose. I don't know, that's kind of where I'm at in my mind.
Yeah, yeah, it just, I mean, I, I meet my connections, I've met amazing people. Actually, one of my customers co-signed the vehicle with me. I've made real estate connections, I've made, I'm an internet influencer, I've made internet, I, I just make connections. And it keeps me from being by myself at home. And then, once I get done there, I clean my, I clean it all up, and I make sure that it's clean and ready for me to, to come back the next day. And I go home and lay in my bed and Facebook.
I have a question.
Here, go.
But it pertains to the chief, so.
Sure, hold on to that, and then we'll, we can bring the chief back up. Any questions? Since I don't want to make a bull, I mean, juggle back and forth. But any other questions for Ms. Sasser on this one?
Yeah, yeah, come on.
Right, go ahead.
Yeah, Ms. Sasser, so is it, it's my understanding that you have a couple other vocations, you're a real estate and internet influencer?
Yes, sir.
So you, so you do have some other avenues?
Well, the problem is, is I'm trying to brand myself, and life just keeps throwing all these things out at me. I got my real estate license in 2019, or 2018, and then I started to get going, and then COVID happened, and then my divorce happened. I'm a licensed Realtor, but I haven't been able to practice real estate because of all my life things happening. As for my internet marketing, I've had to rebrand myself because all of my social media was deleted for political reasons. And so I've had to totally start over with my rebranding myself, which I haven't really been able to do because of everything happening in my life. And so being out in the public, I'm making actual physical contacts. That's helping with all of it.
Possibly.
I have. Well, I mean, but I, I mean, I did.
Some of it may have been negative, but anyway, okay.
When, and, sir majest, now since I've been, I was working there, it was, has been nothing but positive. I, the only, the two, other two altercation, the two altercations that happened, yeah, I did, I did have a drink, but like I said, that, what did that is, on, the date was February 13th. My eviction on February 8th, just, I just wanted, all right, I give up, but then I'm not giving up.
That segues right into my second question. What in the language of, in the language of the bond, did you not understand that you were supposed to stay away from alcohol? It seems very straightforward, and if I were someone on the mend and on the movement wanting to go into vacation, a vocation that may include alcohol, I think I'd really try to clean up my act and, and stay away. The, the language seems very clear. Is there something in there you did not understand?
I did, and I did stay away from alcohol. I just turned to it because of everything happening to me again. And like I said, the situation with the officer, I was, I, I, I was, I did, I mean, I, yeah, I just got caught. I got caught, I turned to it, and I got caught.
Oh, you weren't intending to get caught, or you just?
Well, I mean, I, I wanted to drink. I mean, it just, I, I was stressed out, fear of being homeless. I mean, it's not fun.
I, I personally suggest you pursue your other avenues of earning a living.
Any other questions?
I have one, just, it says about the bond conditions, and I understand what bail jumping is, is, and I understand bond conditions. But it states right in here, it says, under, under no circumstances, you know, can you, for any purpose, can you even be, sounds like what you're doing today. Like, if you can't even be in there doing that, and if you have some open cases that you haven't been even judged yet. So I don't see how giving you a license to be somewhere that you're not even allowed to be would help you other than enabling you to continue getting in more trouble, you know what I mean? I don't, that's what I was worried about.
That's the thing, is I, it, I, it keeps me out of trouble. And as for the charges, I know the battery has been dropped by the victim. Now, as for the resisting and the disorderly conduct, I was guilty of that. I was not guilty of battery. And I, my attorney is Lewick, Mr. Lewick, and I know that the battery was dropped by the victim. Also, with the other occurrences, it was because there was a no contact, but the no contact was lifted. And for whatever reason, it was, it was lifted with Monroe County, but it wasn't lifted with the city. But as for the drinking, yes, I, I was doing, I was doing excellent. And then the eviction happened, and it just threw me on that, off that course again. But since then, since then, I mean, I have not been drinking. I mean, I have, I have not had a job. I, I won the, I won the eviction, but now they're trying to pick me for non-payment, and we got to go to court about that. But with what I'm going through now, I'm not turning to the alcohol. The alcohol, again, was my way of being able to sleep because very, very, very bad trauma that I've experienced in my previous, pretty much my, I just turned 45, 44 years of my life. And, and I know, I know that's the issue, and I take care of that issue, but unfortunately, I, and like I said, when I was working at the bar, I didn't drink. I, I didn't want to drink. And then I would go home and do it all over again.
I just, until you remove bond conditions.
And, and I have, I have heard and seen that, like, my attorney can request for the judge to lift that. And, and my attorney said, I mean, if this, this happens, then we will request a hearing to get that lifted, to allow me to go to work.
Any other questions from Ms. Sasser before we talk to Chief one more time? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chief, you want to help, Nellie, have questions? In the meantime, Becky, if you could just remind the group, if the license were to be turned down, well, technically, at council tomorrow night, right? That would be the official decision. It would be six months before a reapplication could occur, if that.
That's correct.
Even though, I mean, I know the 12-months stuff would probably still be on there as well, but.
Right, the same rule would apply as far as how we determine whether or not to deny the license between chief and I. But if an appeal is denied, you can't reapply for same.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was, we all understood. Nellie, you have questions for Chief?
I just have a question on resisting destruction of an officer.
Yes.
What is that?
Well, it could be many things. Resisting instructing could be lying to an officer. In this particular case, it was, I believe she was being removed from her residence, and she was in handcuffs and did not want to walk downstairs and was kind of like doing dead weight. So officers kind of had to carry her from one spot to another. It's been a few weeks since I've read that report, but I, I think that's, that's what, what happened.
So she was given officer, her company, with?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else for me?
Any questions for Chief? I just want to make sure, so I'm looking at the list in the, in your letter in the packet here. So just to understand, there's like five incidences. Is it where, if they're arrested for bail jumping, is it then they're referred after the fact? Or is that one incident?
Yeah, that's a great question, just for clarity. It's still a charge. It's, it's, it depends on, we can, so for those offenses, when I say referred, referred is the person is released that evening by us, and we will do a report, and we will send the case to the district attorney's office for, for their review when they get to it. They have a very large caseload. We could have chosen to just make a custodial arrest, squad car, off to jail we go. But sometimes we don't do that due to staffing levels or something else going on in the city or wanting to keep our people here versus, you know, taking an hour with one officer, going to smart, the booking process, et cetera. So there's, it's, it's kind of a shift discretion up to the shift supervisor depending on the charge, on whether it's referred or whether it's a custodial arrest right on, right on the spot.
So when we see on, so say September 1, there was an arrest for bail jumping, and then September 2 was a referral for bail jumping.
Yes.
Is that the same incident?
Separate incident.
Those are two different?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any way I can explain those two incidents?
Um, well, yeah, hold on a second. Is there any questions for Chief? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Sasser, if you want to, I mean, if you guys, if you want to explain the two instances, where?
On the July 31st incident, like I said, that was with the then-on and off, on and off again boyfriend. It was a verbal, it was a verbal disagreement. Earlier that day, I had called the police, I had called the police because he wouldn't leave my residence. Anyways, that night that I was over there, it was verbal, then that's when he called the police. And then they handcuffed me because I was at his property. And then, because I knew I wasn't guilty of battery, and I was being handcuffed very tightly. Past trauma, I have post-traumatic stress disorder, honestly, just I blacked out. I just, the, the trauma. And I, I, you know, I guess, you know, I made it tough for the, the officer or whatever. But then on September 1st and 2nd, as I had explained earlier, the no contact was lifted from Monroe County. And I was over at this boyfriend, this on, this on and off again boyfriend's residence, and he had fell down his stairs. And he, I had been over there, and I, and I had left, but I had left my key and to my, my other apartment that was just around the corner. And I went back to his apartment and knocked at his door, and when I did, he fell down the steps. And the police officers, I had had to call 911, and the police officers had to break the window, and he had to be airflown to, to La Crosse. And that was very traumatic because there was a lot of blood, and I didn't know what, what was happening or if he was okay or anything. And so then that's when the officers were like, oh, well, you know, you're not supposed to be here. We can arrest you, and I guess that was the one referral. And then, so then they released my dog, so he has my dogs. And because at my apartment that I was about to move in, I couldn't take my dogs. And the, they released the dogs to me, and I didn't have any dog food or eat any food because the place that I was in was all had, was mildew and mold and mushrooms growing everywhere is why I was displaced from there. And so when I got back to the apartment, I realized I didn't have any dog food, I didn't have any human food, any of that. And so I walked back to the apartment, and he was already airflowen to, to La Crosse. I went back to the apartment and was just in there getting the dog food. And the next thing I know, I hear the police officer saying, Jennifer, is that you? And I'm like, yes, I'm just getting the dog food, and then they arrested me for being in there again.
Thank you. All right, I want to turn now, was there any conversation amongst the committee about this, or pending no, or there's no discussion, is there a motion?
Chief, right, let me discuss it. And I'll make a motion. I would make a motion to deny based on the first time it was an alcohol being under the influence. And the second time, it's, you're still under the influence again, and they're all violating the body conditions. So even though it's for different reasons, but each time she was violating the provisions of the law and that there's still body conditions that exist that don't allow you to even be in a tavern for a bar. So at this time, I would recommend.
Hold on a second.
All right, we have a motion by John and a second by Richard. Is that motion, motion denies, like, going to be appropriate for the needs of the license? Becky?
Yes, the motion that I have here is motion by Glenn, second by hearing intent to recommend the cause. It's an idea appeal for bartender license for Jennifer Sasser.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I know some of this can get super specific. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think the, the hard part here, and I think Chief kind of hit the nail on the head, is when you, when you have the order that you can't enter a tavern, bar, or liquor store for any purpose, I would not want to set someone up for failure by okaying a license that we couldn't in good conscience allow them to execute because they wouldn't be able to enter any of these premises that we don't know for how long, right? So it's a complicated situation, and I commiserate. I mean, there, you were dealing with some heavy stuff, and I apologize that, you know, you're going through that. But that's kind of where I end up on it, so. So any other discussion? All right, so hearing none. All those in favor of denying the, the appeal, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move back up to the Reports section of the agenda. So now we'll go to Parks and Rec with Agenda Item Two, the Toma Parks and Recreation Program Report. Hey, Joe.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
We'll make the program report quick, got a lot of things later on in the agenda for the Parks and Rec Department, so I'm just, uh, busy as usual with snow removal the last month and then now we're going to get busy time of year, hopefully the snow's gone and the warm weather, we got a lot of parks to clean up and get ready for spring soccer, baseball, softball at our parks. Getting our bathrooms opened up and just reminders to the public, May first is our goal for outdoor restrooms. We will try to do our best to get those facilities that house, uh, youth and high school activities open prior to some of the other parks in our system. Uh, winter programmings are finishing up and we're getting, uh, ready to go for spring, summer, we're still trying to finalize some gymnastics classes, still looking for staffing for that, but hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have some sort of program out to the public and then, uh, working on aquatic center job inquiries and schedule for that. So, uh, next month we'll be busy getting, hopefully things lined up for the pool and then recreation park, you've seen the activities listed there and, uh, a lot of, uh, spring and summer activities to get ready for our recreation park as well. So any questions or concerns?
All right, thank you. Thanks, Joe. Moving on to the City Clerk, we have Agenda Item Number Three, the City Clerk.
Good evening. Just a couple of reminders, we do have an election coming up on April fourth and that'll be relevant to this body because we will likely be reswearing in some of our older persons and potentially a new one. I guess we don't know until that happens, but just so everyone knows, we will be swearing in whoever wins on the election on the fifteen minutes before the council meeting. So we'll want to be here early in order to do that, whoever you may be. Uh, and then just kind of a new thing and we're going to talk a little bit about, uh, one of the, the referendums tomorrow night, we're going to have some representatives from the school district on and talk about the referendum on the ballot, so just that people understand what it is. But there are three referendums on this ballot, um, two of them are state, uh, referendums and one is the school district. So just keep that in mind and if you have questions on that, you can get from me later. Um, and then just other news, you know, we're working on a really big public records request and, uh, we are also working on a boot truck ordinance, which we will likely be bringing in to, for this body and, uh, and the council over the next couple of months. We've got it all kind of written up, I just wanted to, you know, make sure that Shane looked it over and there's no zoning issues that need to be covered by the planning commission before we send it your way, but look forward to that and, um, that's about it. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Moving on to the Treasure section, we have Agenda Item Four, the March twenty-twenty-three Treasure.
Good evening.
Evening.
Um, tax collection, second installment tax payments are due on March thirty-first. Uh, so we've seen an uptick in traffic at the window, getting those paid. Uh, dog and cat licenses are also due, uh, the thirty-first, so it's your last chance to get your pet's license without incurring a late fee. Um, we started our year-end financial statement audit today, um, so that is happening, keeping us busy. Um, we're also getting set for our twenty-twenty-three bonding. We will likely, uh, the plan at this point is to have a special meeting before the committee of the whole meeting in April. Uh, the timing of setting our sale is, has to be very precise and in order to get our sale set for the date, um, which we would like to get it set, we have to have that special meeting on that date. Um, so we thought since everyone will already be gathering and shouldn't take too long, uh, maybe meeting at six o'clock on that Monday night. Uh, Dave Ferris from Ellers will be present, he will be doing his presentation, um, to show the impact of our bonding for the approved projects for twenty-twenty-three. Um, as a part of that, we're also working, uh, all the department heads to come up with a five-year capital plan or to update our five-year capital plan, um, that can change year over year. We try to keep it pretty consistent, but, um, going out, adding an additional two years to the existing plan and just trying to get that set out so that we make sure our bonding stays level, um, and that our, our debt service, um, tax rate or mill rate is staying level and we're not having these large swings that we've had the past couple of years. On to the CDBG, um, in March of twenty-twenty-two, council voted to discontinue the state revolving loan fund and to refer all local residents inquiring about these loan, uh, programs, referring them to Cooley Cap. Um, due to the timing of a retirement and medical leave, it didn't get done before the former director left, uh, and I've been working for the last year to get that process completed. We did receive notice on March seventh that we were approved to end our administration of that program. I have been in contact with Cooley Cap and we've already worked together to get a new loan rolled out for a local resident who is having some issues with some lead poisoning. Um, so with that, we will not be taking any new loan applications through the city, but again, we'll be referring all, uh, inquiring parties to Cooley Cap and they're happy to help. Mass transit, uh, we just concluded audits from twenty-seventeen through twenty-nineteen. Um, it had been on our radar that in twenty-eighteen, the federal government had overfunded our program by around twenty-six thousand dollars. The results of these audits confirmed that fact and so now we will be paying back the federal government that twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, we have this booked on our books as a, as a payable, we knew that this was likely coming, um, so it wasn't a shock, but it is now confirmed, it's now inevitable. Uh, also, the new vans that were purchased, or were ordered by the previous administrator in twenty-twenty-one are almost ready to be here, so we received notice that those are on their way. I've been working, um, with the Department of Transportation to get our grant funding updated because, uh, in two years, the price of everything has increased dramatically. Luckily, they are increasing our award amount to match, but it's been, it's been a process, so. And then, uh, finally, on the mass transit side, there was an accident in early March and the insurance company has declared that ban a total loss. So we are currently down a vehicle in the service, so we're hoping to get these new vans in ASAP. Uh, debt service, we paid our twenty-seventeen A and twenty-twenty-one, or twenty-twenty B in March, March first, and we made our final payments on the state trust fund loan, uh, for the ICE Center addition, so those loans are now paid in full. That's all for my report. Um, I present the February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three cash and investments report for your approval.
I'm going to motion approve.
Hold on a second.
All right, we have a motion by John and a second by Sean to approve the February twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three cash investments report. Any discussion?
Any highlights in there? Anything that?
No, again, the big swings are, uh, we're now paying the big chunks on the, um, EMS or the emergency services building, so, uh, those reserve funds that we had there are dwindling, but otherwise it's staying pretty steady. Uh, and again, any, any CDs that are coming up for maturity are getting renewed at a much higher rate, we're going from point five to five percent. So it's been good from that angle, so.
And how did Ellers' investment plan of those EMS funds, is that working pretty well?
It is.
Things are maturing and we have money to pay and?
Yes, uh, about every two weeks, they send an email and say, this is what you have maturing, what do you have in, in expenses related to these, um, these projects? I give them a list of what we need to pay and then any excess is reinvested on a short-term basis. So it's been, uh, a really, really great program, really, uh, they've been really great to work with and it, we've benefited, uh, in the capital projects fund.
Yeah, good to hear, because I know we debated, you know, and had to go through the process of actually doing that and nice to hear that the plans that you draw up actually come to fruition and have worked the way you want them to.
Yes, it has been working.
Very good, good job.
Any other discussion on the cash investments report? Gary, none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Molly. Moving on to the Public Works and Utilities section, we have Agenda Item Number Six, Public Works and Utilities Director Report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And I, well, I was having my, um, Molly has helped us quite a bit with that same scenario with the utilities, uh, funds also, so it's been helpful on our end too. Street Department, uh, been doing quite a bit of work out to Rec Park, uh, the fence line that we had out there was not maintained, uh, for quite some time and, uh, spent a lot of effort out there and still out there working on fixing fencing and, um, other, uh, items that Joe needs help with out there, Paul. Had, uh, quite a few hookups with our sweeper, garbage trucks, seemed like a lot of things kind of all went down at the same time, we didn't have any disruptions as far as services, but just, uh, some larger, uh, items for maintenance and repairs. Still working throughout the city on replacing the street signs. Um, we did also get one, um, traffic signal replaced on Juneau. Uh, it'll be the only one there that's black. Uh, we took a little bit different approach, instead of buying new, uh, we found some, uh, very good automotive paint and we're refurbishing the ones that we have and it seems to be a, a good process and hopefully they'll hold up and, and kind of fit in and not have that huge expense, so kind of looking forward to seeing how that comes out. Also, um, I mentioned that we're working on a trailer for road closures, kind of a complete hookup to this trailer and go and you can shut down streets and take care of those events and just make it more efficient for the street crew to provide that service to downtown events. We're ahead of the game from a chiller standpoint at City Hall, so it's been installed, uh, but we are waiting for the, um, startup, uh, in this early spring, so hopefully we'll be prepared for those warm days that are coming. So, uh, kudos to Buckner on that. We did extend a job offer to, uh, Andrew Straight, he actually started today and, um, looking forward to having him, uh, on the team. Sword Department, we had some minor failures on the equipment and, uh, they're also painting, um, kind of sprucing things up within the plant. Water operations are normal, uh, we did have two employees that, uh, stepped up, I guess you'd say, Nate Wigg and Derek Knopssinger. Uh, they'll be re, representing the city of Toma in a leadership role for the Western Wisconsin Water Professionals. Uh, we have a quarterly meeting in Toma, uh, it's a gathering of probably in a seventy-five mile radius, um, operators throughout the state, so it's kind of nice to see, uh, those guys step up and, and take that on. Also, um, probably one of the bigger things happening for us is PFAS. Uh, we started our testing sampling today, um, and we're returning five fairly large boxes of samples and, uh, we'll get more or less our first crack at what we're going to see in our system. If we potentially have any issues, we don't feel that we do, but, um, I guess this is, uh, this is the time that we're going to find out, um, and hopefully we're, we're sitting good and we don't have any of those contaminants. Also, this GATA system for the water department, uh, we've been working on upgrading that and we're just about complete. Uh, we do have about ninety-five percent of that done and, and, uh, everything's operational, just kind of fine tuning the, um, operations. Uh, the Lake Committee met last Thursday and, uh, the next meeting is scheduled for May eighteenth at five o'clock. Have any questions?
I do. Can we go to work on paddles?
They've been working on those.
I noticed on Main Street, but it's about the side.
Believe it or not, they are working on the side streets also, um, there are a lot this time of year, obviously.
Yeah.
And we have one guy out pretty much all the time, almost every day and almost all day long, so, uh, we, you're, you're going to find them, um, call us, if there's some really bad ones, we will, we will take that call and try to see what we can do to fix it, but patience is, is the virtue here. Do our best and that's all we can do. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the Police Department, we have Agenda Item Seven, the February twenty-twenty-three Police Department Monthly Report.
Hello again. Recruit Ethan Pedersen, uh, still at the Police Academy, still doing well, we get frequent updates, uh, from him, uh, out there, got pepper sprayed today, so, uh, he came back with all kinds of stories on how bad that hurt, so, uh, good for him. We are doing a joint hiring process, that's going to be March twenty-fifth, this Saturday, with Monroe County and the Sparta Police Department, right now we have nineteen applicants. So we're basically sharing an applicant pool, uh, the morning is going to be physical, GOD and, uh, written testing and we'll do lunch, uh, with the group and then in the afternoon we're going to kind of split off, they'll interview with us, they'll interview with Sparta, they'll interview with Monroe County and, uh, we will identify candidates that we think are a good fit, uh, to our, our city and our culture and our department and, uh, Monday night, uh, the following Monday night, uh, will be, uh, Police and Fire Commission interviews, uh, we, we can identify someone, because we have one opening right now, if we can identify someone, we'll, uh, uh, we'll get them in, get the background, go in, uh, psychological testing, physical testing and get a start date if they're certifiable. Uh, a lot of the candidates these days are not certifiable and what that means is, is they have not been at the Police Academy yet. Uh, there are a couple in this process that have, uh, one of which has done, uh, a ride-along with us and, uh, seems to like the department, they got good feedback on, on this person, so, uh, we're pretty hopeful that we would find somebody, so. We'll see how that works out. Uh, annual report, uh, I'm led to believe that you guys got this in your, in your mailbox or something, got any questions on that at all? Fantastic. Uh, reminder to everybody, our canine golf outing, July twenty-first at Hiawatha, um, it's our third annual one, it's, uh, it's a lot easier to plan these days, the first one was from the ground up and, and now it's just kind of, it's kind of moving, so we just tweak a couple of things. Uh, our records management project with Central Square, it's underway, it's in the beginning stages. Uh, we're at the spot right now where it's basically IT professionals, uh, in the background trying to establish.
No, that's just, uh, just the monster. Yep. That's a good check though.
So, uh, their, their IT is making a connection and it, it, it'll get moving here, but, uh, they're doing that in the background. Also, with the records management system we applied for and received, uh, a grant of twenty-six thousand dollars, uh, to assist us with this RMS project, so, uh, this will, uh, this will fund, uh, mo, probably all of the data conversion, uh, so we have, we have data in our current records management system right now that has to get transferred and that, that's quite a process, uh, so that should be taken care of and some, some hardware, some computers, uh, computer screens, things like that, so, um, we just found out about that, uh, late last week, so that's great. I think that is it, unless there's some questions for me? Perfect, thank you.
All right, we'll jump back into the general portion of the agenda, we'll jump down to Agenda Item Number Nine, a special beer and wine permit application by Monroe County Support Services for Budweiser Derelict Super National Truck and Tractor Pull on June twenty-second to the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion approved.
Second.
I got a motion by Richard and a second by Sean. Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Ten, special beer and wine license application by Monroe County Support Services for Monroe County Fair on July twenty-sixth to the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion approved.
Second.
Uh, motion by Sean and a second by Richard. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
John?
Yes.
Was it last year that we expanded to the whole fairgrounds?
Yes. Yes.
Or as the area?
Yes, it's the whole for?
How did that go?
Actually, actually it went really well, we had less.
I'm saying while I'm.
Well, no, and actually I think we have less, you have less. Actually, I think we have less, you have less interaction with people because you're not telling them you can't do it. And they didn't throw, you know, they didn't, they didn't give our security guys or gate people a hard time because it's like, well, these, they're, you know. So it actually went pretty, it went really well for our first time. Tractor pull, like I said, it's the whole outer perimeter. They can go anywhere because of bits, because part of it is we can't control what everybody else, like the pullers bringing because they're already in there. Fair and that is the whole outer perimeter, but during fair, they can't bring it in to the barn area because it stops at the, used to be a fence there by the end of the exhibit building and to the barns because of the FFA. Being that the high schools in there is part of that's their school event, the beer can't go into the barns. But I, I think we probably had less. Chief, would you say it went pretty good?
Yeah, there was no uptick in issues.
So.
Regular.
Good to hear.
Like I said, I think it worked better because some people didn't give our security people a hard time. Well, I just bought it and now you're making me throw it away. Well, that's the rules. We don't make the rules.
Or the ones that chug it on the way out.
Yeah, you know, they're going to chug it and then they're going to give you a hard time because they, you know, so.
And no problems with going off the gates and everything?
No, because they can't take it out the gates and it helps because they have time to drink it and then they just throw it, you know, so.
Great. That's it.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this? Reminder that the motion was to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item eleven. Monroe County Support Services extending hours of operation at the Monroe County Fair Beer Garden on Friday, July twenty-eighth and Saturday, July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three at Recreation Park.
Move through.
I got a motion by Lamont and a second by Nellie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to agenda item twelve. Ordinance amending ordinance section two dash five five seven of the City of Toma municipal code.
I'm going to talk to this one actually because Shane's microphone isn't working very well.
All right.
So this is actually regarding the Long Range Planning Committee. And the Long Range Planning Committee did recommend this to the council, but we're talking about here since an ordinance change. What it would be is simply changing the amount of members from, I believe, it was nine members to seven members. And then it will reduce the quorum from five members to four members. That's really the only change. And the reason for it is it's been very difficult to get a quorum and I see Sean nodding. You know, it's hard that they can't even have a meeting because they can't get their quorum. So actually talk about and decide what to recommend to council. So it just made a lot of sense, so that is the only change in this ordinance change we do. And we're actually requesting if at all possible, the recommendation would be to adopt it at the council.
Two all three.
Two all three, if possible.
Okay, I have a couple of questions in regards to this. Reducing the membership by two. I believe part of that committee is already designated by composition as specifically as to who has to sit on it. Members of certain other committees. So what two positions, are we eliminating two of the general public positions?
Yes.
Right.
In which case we're getting less and less outside participation and ideas. And we're just getting more concentrated in-house. So I think I'm going to vote against it.
That's, that's a fair point, I think. The problem is though, without, without having enough people to make a quorum, attend the meetings, then you either end up with a committee that is made up of a smaller group of more concentrated ideas or a committee that's ineffectual because they can't get people to show up, they can't pass anything, so.
Are we putting members on there that don't want to be on there or?
That's my idea. Do we have public members on there?
No, I don't think it was that. I think this time around, oh man, we had two resigns.
And two resigned.
And couldn't get them replaced?
I don't know. I couldn't speak to the replacement. I think that would have been the mayor's purview, right, to replace the members of the.
That's correct, but I think.
We're so close to election.
I think that was part of it that it, you know, they were hoping that, they had been talking about this members reduction, I think, for a little while. And so rather than put them around that they had to eliminate. They did it when they had some attrition, so they wouldn't have to worry about kicking somebody off, yeah.
I also think long range planning is in a potion of, or a position of transition where they're sort of figuring out what it is that they do since largely they were just, mostly just approvals of certificates of appropriateness for signs and things. And now, you know, for a little while there was a discussion of it was, was it going to be like an economic development committee or something like that? So I think we're kind of getting this nebulous like, what is the L R P C, right? And so, but your, your point is valid, Richard. By, by removing members at large, you of course have more members who sit in the same rooms and hang out on Monday and Tuesday nights together, talking about city stuff.
But, but the makeup is what, two council people?
So the makeup right now is the mayor, two members of the common council and six members, other members, with two of those other six being members of the planning commission. So instead of having six members with two of them being part of the planning commission, you will have four members with two of them being part of the planning commission.
And the planning commission can be non-council, non-mayor, non-people, they're business people.
Right.
Yes. Also, so we can have two there, plus we can also have two more.
Yes.
Outside, so.
So that's where we can fill the gap.
So I don't.
Right.
So there is opportunity for non-insiders, so to speak, using that term, I guess.
There's still technically more non-members than members.
Can be.
Four and three and four, two and a mayor, so.
Would there, I mean, would there be appetite then in saying that the two council members weren't also the same two council members that were of the planning commission or would we want them to be?
It becomes difficult to do that because there's only so many meetings people are able to attend. And filling these have been difficult notoriously and not just in the long range planning, but all across the board. It's been hard to fill. People don't necessarily want or have the ability to spend the time at these meetings. So to meet the requirements of it, if they're, if they are on the planning commission, we count them as a planning commission member.
Sure. Any other questions on this or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, second. I got a motion by Sean and a second by Lamont. Is that to approve it all the way through adoption for tomorrow or?
Yes.
Is that?
That's right, yeah.
Okay. That's stated. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance or the amending of the ordinance all the way through adoption tomorrow. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
May.
Motion carries with one no vote, hearing two. Moving on to agenda item thirteen. Toma Police Department Suppression Device Reimbursement Budget Amendment.
We have a, it's a fire, it's a portable fire suppression unit that was donated to us by, I believe, the Lions. And what it is, is we carried around in our supervisor squad car. We typically get to fire scenes before fire does because they're coming from all over and we're, we're on duty all the time. So what this device does is you throw it inside the structure fire and after you pull a pin and it releases some kind of a gas and it suppresses fires and knocks it down. These are about a thousand dollars a piece, about eleven, about eleven hundred dollars a piece. So we used it and then what we try to do is, is get reimbursement through the homeowner's insurance company, which we did. So we received a check of four thousand dollars and that gets put into a revenue account?
Yep.
All right. I'm learning. So that gets put into a revenue account, but we paid for it out of our operating. And so this is just looking to take the money from the revenue and put it back into our operating. And then a side note, so we had a brand new one and then now we just had another structure fire last week and we were on scene first again and we tossed that one in there, so we're going to be doing this again. But it's, it's a pretty cool tool, you know?
Sounds awesome.
Yeah.
Move through.
Motion by Lamont, a second by Nellie at home.
Make that.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. It's too bad we didn't do this tomorrow. The ceremony really would have liked that back home. Agenda item fourteen, resolution for payment of monthly bills.
Move through payment of monthly bill.
Second.
Motion by Lamont, second by Sean. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item fifteen, approval of the new lease with the Toma Youth Hockey Association. Joe, you got some background?
Yeah, in your pack it should be the old lease and then the updated new one we talked about a little bit when they came and got permission to work out an agreement with the possibility of a junior hockey team that comes to Toma. There's a lot of old language in there that's outdated and we needed to remove some language that was, was the initial bond or whatever payment with the initial shell, which was years ago. We need to get that out of there and just a lot of different language of using the recreation building prior to making it a standalone facility. So just cleaning up some old language, making it up to date. So we don't got to keep coming back for the hockey group with, with the junior team and so forth. So just making things a little cleaner.
So the junior team will not be part of this lease or if they will?
Well, it has a new timeframe with youth hockey in there for when they will be making ice and, and working a third party or whatnot that we agreed upon a couple of months ago. So.
Because we don't have any, we won't have any to do with the agreement between youth hockey and that junior team. We're just in the building to youth hockey.
Correct. Yeah, we allowed youth hockey to work with them directly, if I remember right.
Correct. So it just cleans it all up and extends the season, like a month on each end or something?
Second, we go August and then a month on the tail end, I believe, so.
Couple of weeks on the beginning and a month on the end.
Correct. There's still paying on the utilities for that extra time.
Correct. And agreements of the utilities, the money being in there about.
It costs as much as the whole year.
Correct. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by John and a second by Lamont to approve the new lease for Toma Youth Hockey. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item sixteen, Winnebago Park Trail Edition.
Joe? I just wanted to bring this for the council. We had a pretty good lengthy discussion at our park board meeting. We're looking at use cell tower fees from our agreement with that for park improvements. As you notice, we've been working through that Winnebago Park project for some length now and it's getting hopefully to the tail end of it this spring with hopefully May as, you know, the bathroom and the plaza and everything is constructed. Different community members, myself looking at the traffic through the park with the driving, the parking and just so at the park where we brought up adding an extension to that walking trail that's around the point to continue that along the shoreline in between the new roadway and the lake. Why we brought it up is just, I'd hate three, four, five years down the road and say, yeah, maybe we should just add that trail along the shoreline. Where now if you've been through there, it's pretty muddy, it's all tore up. So that's why we took it to the Parks and Recreation Commission and they want to bring it to the council to add that walking, walking trail extension along that shoreline.
So Director Prax, didn't we, in this vetting of this, when we did this park project, didn't we design the roadway that goes from the point over to that new boat landing area with extra width so that we could mark out a walking lane on that?
Correct, it is eighteen feet wide. We're looking to mark it. With that being said, the concern is if there's a triple booking and everyone's been to Winnebago Park, see someone at the central pavilion, the enclosed shelter in the point pavilion. Just being around that park, I, I know people are going to pull off on the shoreline, those busy events. So they'll be backing up into that walk lane or they'll be parking on it, you know, in. I don't think we're in the business to call the cops every time someone's parking on the parkland, especially the busy events there. We saw that the fishing derby, you know, it's a great event for community, but people are parking all over. So we just felt it'd be a safer, and the park board members, a lot of them, a safer route for those with families, children, bikes. To have a separate paved walkway in between this new roadway and the shoreline. So that's why we brought it in. We thought this is the time to do it because it's, and then we'd be done with that project and move on to a different park and so forth.
So we haven't even tried it yet, the way we designed it. And it seems to me, if you look at, if people are looking at the picture on here, and I apologize to the people out in the audience that may not have this. The path goes between our new road and the shoreline and it goes across from the point, little parking lot where it ended over there, over to our new boat landing. But when we get over to the new boat landing, it gets really complicated and complex and there's no real good way to take this path through that area. And if you look at this, maybe we could look at going on the inside of our road that we designed for it and then curving around off the end of the playground and coming around and staying out of all that traffic and parking there and, and coming out to Brandon Street more to the east, by the east edge of the playground. So it just seems like taking it with this new piece really takes it to a place that I'm not sure we want to go to that place.
Well, if we put it on inside, people are going to park on inside. They're done already during, during the project, they're going down in there. The issue is that central pavilion's in a, in a spot where a lot of people rented for that park usage, but it's just not. I mean, it's, it's busy park. It's, we tried to put a lot into that park and, you know, the park board just felt adding this walkway would, would complete that area for those that, we do have, if, if, you know, I hear a lot of comments in the community. One of the greatest things we have for our park system is our walking and recreational trail. And you can see that at a daily basis, our users walking, you know, all the time. They sometimes they'd be this out there when we got snow because we could see the footprints already for that. So just past, you know, the park board was looking at.
So without that extension, the walkway ends, I forget which pavilion is that, the J C's one? Is that the one that like comes off the point and.
Correct.
And so, and that ends basically also in a parking area, right?
Correct.
If I remember right.
Well, I'd agree, so just enforce, force the no parking along that road and keep the trail open and we haven't even tried it.
Yeah, there's the concern is, is people, and it was this discussion when we had the open houses and stuff, you know, there was talk about just closing that roadway and having it just a path or blocking it. But there's two user groups that use Winnebago Park for, I mean, the, the loop. There's your walkers, bikers, runners, families with dogs, cats, pets. And then those are the ones that love driving through Winnebago Park. And that's what we've noticed, or I've noticed as this project continues, they're still using that as a loop. We will have one way, it will be, still be a one way, there'll be a stop sign where the new restroom is. So they will have to stop for those individuals coming from the new parking lot to use this proposed walkway. So there will be some stoppage there, a little time for people. Then they'll be able to get off the roadway onto the walking trail that we're proposing here.
So it wasn't, we, we knew that there were those two user groups and wasn't the compromise to widen the road? And so that we, because the original design was to get, we moved the road in so we could have more green space between the road and the shoreline so that we could have picnic tables and, and, and that kind of user space. And now we're going to go in there and put a six foot trail all the way through. We're going to eat up the green space. We moved the road and now we're going to take up the green space when our compromise was to put the walking along the road. I just, I personally, having been a part of this since the beginning, I'm not in favor of adding this more hard surface.
Any further questions for Joe on this one or do I have a motion? I mean, I'll say. I mean, I'll say, uh, from my standpoint, I, I run around the lake a lot, so anything that gets me not to be on the road is, is a win for me, for sure. I mean, I'm not sure exactly where it ends now.
I mean, it'll be between this, where the new parking lot is, where the road, so it'll be a walkway between the roadway and the shore. So there'll still be room for picnic tables and green space there along the shoreline.
So Brandon Street is the, the long road that goes along the south side of the park. Can we put it on the TV?
Well, this is.
Brandon Street goes on the south side.
Yeah.
Or the, or the lake side. I can't even get those.
Yeah, cause we're looking at, the, the map that's in the package is the new.
The new roadway.
What it's going to be, right?
It's there now, yeah.
Oh, it is there now.
It's completed, so.
I don't know if I've been on it, I think.
Joe, I have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, so it looks to me by the map, like if I had the width of the road is eighteen feet, it almost looks like it's the same distance. So if a car pulls off the road, naturally sort of wouldn't pull. Right now, people go all the way to water sometimes.
Correct.
So this will be like a, a sidewalk would actually keep them, this is where they go and they're not driving on. Cause right now they fill the whole thing up.
Correct.
People drive all the way to the water, you know, and they pull in off that road. The only nice thing is it's sort of like a buffer, like people wouldn't park across the sidewalk. I'm hoping.
And that's what we had a lengthy talk at the park board that hopefully this would be the buffer where people, if they wanted to, on the busy days would pull off to the grass and be, be off, off the roadway for that.
So, and then it looks like there's at least another, how about twenty-two, twenty-four feet between the sidewalk and the water?
Correct. On some portions, yeah, it gets narrow, some wider, some, so.
Cause I like the idea too, it would be nice.
Yeah, we're cutting that space right down now.
But it'd be nice to corral the cars, you know.
We're talking about boulders too, along that road.
Yeah, we're gonna have to control things, we're gonna get this park next, we're gonna have to do some controlling, we can't just let them go do what they want.
Sure.
I'm for granite boulders and, you know, um, natural bolliers out there to self-control. We haven't even tried anything yet, now we're gonna go spend another twenty, thirty thousand dollars on something that we already designed into this plan in the beginning.
Well, the, the two things that would give me pause here to, to your arguments, the one would be, one is that stuff's already still tore up from the construction. So we're not, so everything's still kind of, uh, be easier to put into construction.
Absolutely.
And, you know, on the other part, it is, it was a recommendation from the park board, um, to do this, right? So, you know, we're the second group looking at it.
It was a long debate, it was forwarded to the council, I don't know if it was actually approved.
And obviously on that word, and I was like, no.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, it was, it was. Looking at it, it was a five to one with Lamont being the.
So I'm just speaking my piece here, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a, I appreciate the consistency.
What, what would you ask to add that's?
Yes, so you have, we have it up there. And then can we, is that button, street above, it rotates, we will put Brandon Street along the bottom, so.
Yep, so here's Brandon Street, here's a new sidewalk that was in with the street, with the street, here's the, here's Brandon Street, here's the sidewalk that was put in with the street project. Here's the new boat parking, here's the new playground parking, handicap accessible. So the, the community from this way, this will be a stop sign here, right here. So the community coming from this way or the sidewalk, yes, they have to go through there, there's just no way around it. But it'll be slow and then they're gonna hop onto the trail there.
Sure.
And then they'll, next, if you go down to the next page here for me, and then they're gonna be able to hook up to, uh, the new trail that's around the point. So there'll be two, two minor areas in the park, that park that will have to walk in traffic. That's by the accessible fishing pier that's across from the closed shelter in the new parking area. Otherwise, right now, if you go back up for me, please. Thank you, thank you. Right now, here's the roadway, the concern is if we have an event here, everybody's gonna pull off, so if you're coming, you're gonna be, they're gonna be backing into people using it or whatnot, it's a safety thing. And, I mean, during the week, it won't be as busy, but, you know, sometimes at Scroll Fest, we have, you know, we have tri- triple events. So that's just, we're looking at more of a safety concern for those who's wanting to use the, an accessible walkway along the shore. And hopefully, we still have an area for fishing, benches, tables, green space. Otherwise, the concern is just pulling up to the shoreline, getting out and throwing their rod and reel into the lake. And we see that even at Butts Park still, so.
What was the total cost of this thing?
Uh, gurkies would come in when they're down there cleaning things up for fourteen thousand and, and then we would, uh, Kirk and the Public Works have offered, uh, payment for us.
For about six to seven thousand, right? Around twenty thousand total, twenty-one thousand.
We currently have about sixty-six thousand in our cell tower park improvement fund, so.
So we're talking about twenty-one thousand, that was the whole project?
Correct.
Do we have the money already, right, in the account?
Correct. Caution's comments? I would make a motion to approve the trail addition as defined here. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Giggis and a second by Quinn, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Uh, hands up for no votes? All right, so I guess just go with the ayes, cause it was just me and John.
All right, so, motion fails. How many negative votes?
Uh, five. Five negative votes. Keeper.
So I'm ready to think about it, we'll come back to mine.
Yeah, you got twenty-four hours.
So, is Mitch still on, cause I think.
No, he wasn't, he's been bouncing on and on. Okay, I think to go back if I. That's it. Click on participants, the two people who left a little bit, there you go. Uh, man. Well, he's been in and out, so he hopped out commonly, somewhere around, uh, the beer presence. All those weird pauses, I've been looking at the screen when he was still on there, cause we know there was a delay.
Goes after I asked you to raise his hand.
Yeah, exactly, there you go. Yeah, just check the, if you're recording, just check the part where we asked for the raised hand, that was probably the last time I saw.
Oh, no.
All right. Sure. All right, uh, moving on to agenda item seventeen, request usage of ARPA funds for lighting upgrades at Recreation Park.
Yep, just bringing this forward, um, Paul Steele, new Recreation Park maintenance worker, met with, uh, Ben Norman to give us a cost estimate for lighting upgrades to Recreation Park, a lot of our outdoor lighting, indoor facility lighting, um, with ARPA funds. We're looking to get this approved at the department head meetings, uh, when brought up the, for use of ARPA funds, something to return on investment. As utility costs and electrical costs continues to grow, that's one of the major expenses at Recreation Park is electrical and gas. Um, we feel this would help us in the long term, save some money on those ends and get things upgraded, um, sooner than later at Recreation Parks. Correct.
Um, where would this put, I don't know if this is gonna be a moment, current question, or just put our ARPA funds? If we're, if we're to go through.
We currently have three hundred and seventy thousand of unapproved ARPA funds.
And they have to be spent by?
They have to be earmarked by the end of twenty twenty-five and spent by twenty twenty-seven.
Do we have cost savings on computer for that?
Well, we have the rebates in there for cost savings.
No, but I mean the energy savings over time.
I don't need that, I don't have that for you tonight.
I would move to table until we have estimates as far as savings.
Are you recommending? Richard, your thing?
I would move the table until we have estimates on all the savings. The electrical charging. Unless we know how much we're gonna save, it's hard to bet, evaluate it.
Postpone, postpone the official term, or table would just be later in the same meeting, postpone, be two different meeting.
Estimated sa- electrical savings. And how many years of payback would be?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, a motion by Richard and a second by Lamont, postpone till we have savings, all right, further discussion, Peterson.
I just asked if the set team had looked at this at all, and I was gonna say the same thing, have they looked at any savings on that? So, um, so on the, the last two, um, those documents were uploaded before we got our initials on that. We did look at both of these, uh, from the ARPA money and then the trail also. So we were in agreement on the trail, um, and on this one, what we've typically seen is probably a three to four year return on investment for lighting. I think what we're gonna find at Rec Park is everything is metered and really a mixed match of trying to identify what we're gonna find there. Um, but, uh, Van Norman, uh, the consultant that we work with, could give us a very good idea on what we might find on that, so.
Just from one expert to the other, right?
It wouldn't hurt to reach out to him and. It's got a three to five year payback, it's a no, right? And that's what we saw, um, in our way back when in our energy, um, management program. When we upgraded the lights just in the hockey, uh, building itself, I believe that was four years. We would expect kind of the same thing, but it could be a little less just in that one building because that had been upgraded. These other ones are very old and it's not only just the energy savings, it's also the maintenance. We're seeing changing these light bulbs, there's huge payback on that, especially on these that are up sixty-some feet. Some of those that we have to get a, uh, individual contractor to change some of those. Well, those are things I think that we could probably look to see what we can find for more information.
Is that something that'd be as simple as just like an email or a phone call to someone?
I'm not sure that we would have it by tomorrow night.
Okay, that was what I was getting at there.
Yeah, but we can try.
I want.
My experience with the LED lighting is very significant, like it's huge savings. And then the LED lighting lasts way, way, way longer, significantly longer.
And right now, this is, um, one of the few projects that we have that would give us a return on investment of any sort. Uh, we were notified that we didn't, um, receive any grant money for the solar or the EV charging system. So we won't have any of those, um, projects coming up, um, for those grants that we apply for.
Yeah, because asking for that information, it doesn't mean we don't think the project is good, it's just to do our due diligence as council members, to be fiscally responsible. We have some numbers to work with, as Richard said, kinda hard to make an analysis when you don't have the number, some numbers.
Yeah, and I guess maybe that's maybe our fault, um, you know, when we did the PD upgrade, we didn't have those numbers. We had, um, just the assumptions of the cost savings and hopefully we can quantify that a little bit better.
Or a yearly amount of your payback, I mean, if, we're not gonna question your, the integrity of your information. If you say it's for your payback, it, you know, we're gonna assume that, that you did enough background to figure out that that's what it's going to be. Even though you don't have the exact energy saving numbers.
Yeah, I think we're seeing the same thing, just, yeah.
I would, I would think if there was a percent of savings on the electricity from the current light bulbs to the new ones. Like even if Van Norman said, this is eighty percent less energy.
Reduce wattage.
Yeah.
What it costs to replace one, when you say you gotta hire a contractor for the ones, I mean, if ever it needs to be replaced over ten years versus every year.
Those actually go to one of my questions, cause how much does a trip like that cost, like what do we?
Say, for electricity?
If, so we have someone now that has to go, an independent contractor come in to go up sixty feet to.
Oh, a couple, three, four hundred bucks a pop to fix something. I mean, the question, I don't even want, say, design energy, but the question I would have back to the council is, you know, that's our number one big facility in our community, Recreation Park. Do we wanna upgrade our facilities, you know, with lighting, easier to fix, easier to maintain, easier to flip a switch? We have big events, they go out, you know, safety too for electricity out there as well. So that's just my question about, you know, and this is the tool we have is ARPA funds and not put the burden on our taxpayers for that facility out there. So we just try to upgrade that facility with the tools we have through room tax, through ARPA funds to make that, you know, even a better facility for all our major events in our community for out there, so. I mean, we could try to find that, but it's gonna take some time, I mean, we're limited staff at the Parks and Rec, but we'll, we'll try to find it for you.
If, um, what would be the timeframe to installation? So I guess if, if we end up postponing and it doesn't show up for another thirty days, like are we stopping the, the, when these lights being installed before the tractor pull fair and kind of all that?
Probably some of the outdoor stuff that we like for the tractor pull and fair, I mean, this is the time to do it, April and May, cause once May comes, that place is busy, so.
Then do we have like a, do you have any estimate on how long it would take once we were to, were we to approve it, what it would take, will we time to get someone out there to actually make the changes on there? Cause I would hate to go through a whole cycle of, we can just get these your lights up and up now, like, I would rather just do it now. I, I don't think anyone here is arguing that the LED lights probably aren't going to give us some return. But, you know, does the number of years, you know, how many number of years, are we really going to look at it for just? If he comes back and it's still, it's ten years, I thought it were paid, are you, you know, are we just gonna say no because it was ten years or? You see what I'm saying, like, how many years does it really matter?
Well, the contractor, the proposal that's here before us, has, uh, labor costs listed and that figures out to roughly two hundred dollars based on their labor charge per hour.
If we have like the percentage of savings from the current type, what are they, sodium lights, whatever compared to an LED light? If we have it by tomorrow, can we put it in tomorrow?
What was your question about?
If we know the percent of savings of the LED over the current feature lighting that we have.
Should be able to find that by looking at the rec, our ice arena, that's been changed over already, right? The hockey room building?
That's been a long time ago, um, the records from where we started to where we gained efficiencies would take us longer to do that than to.
Yeah, I mean that, I literally mean, like if you have one fixture and you're gonna change out with the current fixture, but the sodium one is, uh, five hundred watts and the LED one is a hundred, you know, you know, that would be good, just to see, it's, I'm sure it's really significant.
Yeah, we're looking at upgrading the hockey building for the third time.
Yeah.
Cause we went for the ones that flipped on and you'd take you twenty minutes to fire back up.
Sure.
Someone hit the switches, the, the T whatever back the top, or then a T five, that's now the LEDs, so we're trying to.
Right.
Same thing in the recreation building, we already upgraded that once, cause it was the same thing, you're at a wedding or banquet, someone go over, hit the switch, it takes twenty minutes for it, the baby's back up, so.
Right, I think what, what John's saying is in lieu of having like a formal sheet that says, here's the amount of time it would take to go from, you know, paying the thirty-six thousand dollars to paying it off, if it's just, our current light usage is X amount of watts and the LEDs would be the significant less amount, then it's just simple math of, you know.
Even if you just say the bulb, this is how much one bulb is, this is the new bulb, cause I know, I know Steve had that.
Right, then we could extrapolate that out without having to go through, we could try to do this in a faster period of time, right? If it's five hundred watts now and it's gonna be one hundred watts when we install the new ones, then we know, eh, about five years, right?
It's a, it's a good deal and I would give all of it tomorrow, I'm not gonna do that.
Well, we'll get on it tomorrow.
And also, how many times a year are we changing? How many times a year are we getting an outside charge from somebody or tying up our people's works? Are we doing it two times a year, ten times a year, fifty times a year, at two hundred, I mean.
The current bulb light to the new bulb light, which is I'm sure is significant.
You're, you're trying to say that it's, that we should make all our decisions just subjectively, cause it's a really good idea. Yeah, we know it's a really good idea, but we as the body need something to make the decisions on. We can't just say, yeah, it's a good idea, let's just, let's just agree with everything, cause it's a good idea.
All green. All green light.
You're making us look like we're not sensitive to Recreation Park and the, and the usage of it, and we are, if you give us information so we can make the decision. We're ready to move.
Any other questions, comments? So, the motion on the floor is to postpone until we have some idea what the savings of the fixtures will be for Rec Park. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, won't oppose, motion carries. Alright, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
A motion by Richard and a second by Nellie to adjourn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned as of eight oh, thank you. Uh, Nellie. Uh, we all have a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rokel?
Michael Murray.
Here.
Adam Gekis.
Here.
Richard Harrington.
Risen.
Sean Zavinsky.
Here.
John Glenn.
Here.
Mitch O'Kale. Lamont Kiefer.
Here.
Nellie Peter.
Here.
Dean Peterson.
Here.
Okay, just a reminder to everyone that we do have people online, so please speak into your microphones. And if you are the ones who are presenting tonight, any of the department heads, again, please make sure you are using the microphone. With that being said, is there anyone here that is desiring to appear before the council? Please step up to the podium, state your name and your address, please, and I will remind you that we allow three minutes for a presentation.
Well, dear Nelson, I live at three fourteen Ennis Street. And I wanted to expound a little bit the committee abut hole last night when we were talking about the trail. I really feel that it's in, that if we, if there's any way possible that we could get families off of the street, that we do so. I think the extension of the trail and having people move off the street is one of the best things, like I said, we can do. There's been an uptick of usage on the trail, especially with the summer. We have a lot more e-bikes in the city of Toma. Unfortunately, going around the, the park is legal for them to do, as far as I know. A lot more people are using the bikes. I, you know, I understand the sixteen or eighteen feet that that was supposed to be to put the walkers on the road. But with families, with kids, with bicycles, tricycles, when you've got, when you can have two lanes of traffic for walkers, you've got people with their dogs and everything else. And like I said, I just think taking them off the road would be the best way to do that. A utilization of that extra width, width on the road could be a designated bike lane, perhaps, that, you know, then people aren't sharing the trail with bicycles. I don't know, that's my, I'm a high utilizer of the, the trail. I use it every day that I am physically able to. There's a lot of traffic on the trail and I just think it would be better for the residents of the city of Toma. So, I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, DeeDee.
Thank you.
And DeeDee is also a member of the ARPA Rex Board. Okay, anybody else wanting to appear before the council?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and please state your name, your address, and we will remind you that you have three minutes.
Pete Thorson, three twenty-two Woodard Avenue. Hypothetically, Mr. Mayor, if a city vehicle hit your building, who would be responsible to fix it?
I'm, I will not engage in conversation, you're, you are allowed to speak before this council, but I, it is, this is not a time meant for engagement, so please just speak what you'd like to speak with us and we'll move on.
No different than if the city and international papers polluted the drinking water as they have on our properties. I've asked for numerous times on issues like the polluted water on our property, the encroachments as far as the sewer that is on my property, not the city right of way, the issues as far as the hydraulic study that someone from the city asked the DNR to suspend for a year. I mean, why can't we get this, this stuff fixed? I mean, any other given municipality would address issues and move on. I don't understand why there's such a roadblock. City attorney has promised me a detailed response two months ago, but nothing happens. I met with city engineers six months ago in regard to the water in, in sewer dilemma. Nothing has happened. Would someone please still step up to the plate and address your issues and get something done? Because if, if, if you treat me like this, you must be treating everybody else like this and how are we ever gonna grow? I mean, this is ridiculous. So, do your job, instruct city officials to stop hiding behind doors and let's get things moving in Toma. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else that desires to appear before the council? If not, we will move on. We will invite the superintendent of schools. Hello, Mike, how are you tonight?
Good as well. Mr. Mayor, council, thank you so much for the opportunity to address the board this evening. We have been over the last six to seven weeks providing information on the operational referendum. Our Board of Education's taken a deep dive into their budget the past seven to ten months and in January did approve and ratify an operational referendum question. An operational referendum is different from a building referendum, so this is gonna focus only on our daily operations, those that impact salary, benefit structures, very minimal maintenance, school safety, security and technology. So, no buildings are involved in this operational referendum. Michelle Clark and I, and Michelle is our business manager, we present this together as a team. She's unable to be with us this evening, she's on a trip to Green Bay for an accounting conference, but she did pre-record her piece because it's important to us, she's put a lot into this, it's just instrumental information and I want her to be able to present her pieces that she put together within the presentation. So, Becky, at this time, do you mind pressing play? And you can follow along in those that are with us here this evening, I do have the presentation and she narrates the different pages there. The only other piece I have is on your second slide is the actual official ballot that will appear, the ballot question that will appear on your April fourth ballot. So, thank you so much for the opportunity tonight.
It is important to understand why our district is seeking to approve an operational referendum on April fourth, two thousand twenty-three. One major reason is that in nineteen ninety-three, revenue limits were put in place by the legislature. A revenue limit is the amount of money a school district can receive through general state aid and the amount of local property tax. The other big reason is that there has been no per pupil increase in the revenue, school revenue in six of the last eight years from the state of Wisconsin, even though our costs and services to students have increased. So, for example, this year we received ten thousand nineteen dollars per student. Last year, we received the same amount per student. Our community has supported a one point five million dollar operational referendum for the last seven years and even with that increased revenue, property taxes for the school portion of property taxes have gone down. So, what our district has done for the last couple of years is that we utilize our federal ESSER funds. Those are monies that came from the federal government that were related to COVID. So, money that was saved in our general budget because of our ESSER monies were put into something called fund balance. And a fund balance is the school district's way to have some emergency monies and those funds are usually used for emergencies and temporary budget shortfalls. So, where exactly does our money for our general fund actually come from? As I mentioned in the previous slide, the light green box on this slide is the per pupil amount and that has not increased. So, to understand where our money comes from, we take our average resident membership, which is three thousand eighty-two students, we multiply that by our per pupil amount, which is ten thousand nineteen dollars per student. Then we can add some one-time monies, like our one point five million dollar operational referendum that is currently in part of our budget and some hold harmless monies for declining enrollment. We add those all together and you come up with a total revenue limit of thirty-three million, two hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. So, what that means is that the total amount of money the Toma area school district receives through generalized equalized state aid and the local property tax is thirty-three point two million dollars. So, why is this revenue limit so important? You can see from this slide that the revenue limit makes up eighty-two point three percent of our entire budget. This year, Toma area school district's budget was forty million, four hundred eleven thousand, four hundred seventy-eight dollars. And you can see that the bulk of that money comes from our revenue limit. And then our revenue limit is something that we are not able to change because of the revenue limits that are put into place. So, why is general aid important? Toma area school district is highly aided by the state of Wisconsin. The more aid as a percentage of your revenue limit, the less local property taxes as a percentage. So, if you take our thirty-three point two million dollars this year that was our revenue limit, you subtract the amount of general equalized aid we received, which was twenty million, nine hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. And when you subtract those two numbers, you're left with our local tax levy. And this year is twelve thousand, I'm excuse me, twelve million, two hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars. And when I said that we're heavily aided, you can see on the chart below that sixty-three point one percent of our revenue limit comes to our district through state general aid and thirty-six point nine percent of our revenue limit comes from local property taxes, the school portion of property taxes. So, how is our tax levy mill rate calculated? Our total school levy again was twelve point two million dollars. You divide that by your equalized property value within the Toma area school district, which this year was two billion, seventy-three million, five hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars. And you multiply that by one thousand and that equals our mill rate, which is five dollars and ninety-one cents. So, in very simple terms, for every one thousand dollars worth of property that someone owns in the Toma area school district, five dollars and ninety-one cents would be on the school portion of their property taxes. This chart is a comparison of our neighbors as far as mill rates go. You can see that Toma is at the bottom. So, for example, if a person owns one hundred thousand dollars worth of property in the Toma area school district, their school portion of property taxes would be approximately five hundred and ninety-one dollars. If they lived in the Bangor school district and owned one hundred thousand dollars worth of property, their school portion of property taxes would be approximately nine hundred and fifty dollars. You can see the state average for a hundred thousand dollars worth of property is seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Now, there's a couple of reasons that Toma is at the bottom. One reason is, is that our district is debt-free, we are not paying for any buildings at this time and some of the other school districts on this list are. Another reason is Toma area school district has always been a low-spending district. So, back in nineteen ninety-three, when revenue limits were put into place, Toma was low-spending at that time and that is the number that the district started with back in nineteen ninety-three. This slide shows our five-year budget forecast and we partner with Barrett Financial to help us make these projections. We use the information we know and the best future predictions that we can. If you look at the very first column for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, you can see that with the two point five million dollar operational referendum, our budget would be balanced. And you can see during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we are already almost one million dollars short. This is where we utilize our fund balance. Remember, those monies are taxpayer monies and should be used to maintain programs and services to our children. And we feel we can use our fund balance for the next four years along with a two point five million dollar operational referendum and continue to, um, programs for our students. Now, there are so many unknowns, including future enrollments, possible per pupil increases in the biennial budget that will be coming this summer, property tax, that property values, our per pupil category for aid and general aid amounts in general. So, people want to know what our mill rate will be for the future. If you can see from this chart, in two thousand eighteen, if I would have owned a hundred thousand dollars worth of property in our school district, my portion of property taxes, the school portion of property taxes would have been about eight hundred and four dollars. This year, if I owned a hundred thousand dollars worth of property, my school portion of property taxes would have been five hundred and ninety-one dollars. And you can see from the chart that we are predicting that our tax levy mill rate is projected to stay neutral or flat. We do believe it will fluctuate, fluctuate slightly up or down, but we do not believe there will be a big increase. And how can the tax levy mill rate stay flat or neutral when we're asking for more money than we have in the past? And the answer is in this slide here. As I had said before, Toma area school district is a heavily aided district. This year, we received sixty-three point one percent of our revenue limit through general state aid and that looks sixty, thirty-six point nine percent for our school portion of property taxes. Next year, we are projected to receive sixty-five point two percent of our revenue limit through general state aid. So, if the percentage of our equalized state aid goes up, then the percentage of our taxpayer percentage needs to go down. It needs to equal one hundred.
Thank you, thank you all, thank you so much. Michelle walked through that so, so well, so appreciate her professionalism and leadership on that point. So, she walked through exactly what would be the impact of a yes vote. Tax impact would be flat to neutral. What happens if the operational referendum were to fail? Well, the district is going to absolutely take a look at operational efficiencies in, ongoing. You, you see, and it's gonna be a very difficult budget cycle over the next four to five years, many unknowns yet to come. So, we are not in crisis mode, this is strategic fiscal planning. So, on this last slide, you'll notice it doesn't say X building will be closed, X number of positions will be reduced. We can utilize those fund reserve dollars and make strategic common sense reductions to ensure that we are offering high-quality educational opportunities for our students and support our faculty and staff that show up each and every day to take care of our kids in so many different ways. So, we'll make those reductions and lean toward the two point five million dollars there. But you'll be hearing more from our school district if this were to fail. We'll make those changes as needed, put our package back together and we'll be back out to talk with our constituents and our patrons and be back here. and our patrons and be back here in the April 2024 timeframe. Because it is, we do need to go back and try again for an operational referendum. You'll see a note there about the low revenue ceiling. If it's raised, one nuance of this law is that if the governor and legislative body do add any funding to the low revenue ceiling, and it's up, right now it's at $10,000 per student. Let's say they agreed to $10,250. With a failed operational referendum, we would not see that $250. However, whatever the legislative body and governor agree on in terms of the per-student allocation in our model, we set that at 250. We would absolutely get that $250 per student. So we'll see what the impact of the low revenue ceiling piece would be if the referendum were to fail. So that's our plan with things. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present. We have information on our website. The Howl is coming to you shortly, to 10,000 different mailing addresses within the school district boundary, more information there. And certainly I'll stand by for questions if there are any tonight.
Do we have any questions for the superintendent?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Calister, for your leadership.
Okay, we have a request by Jennifer Chasser for the consideration of granting her beverage operator's license. I don't see her here. She was here last night. I've entertained a motion.
I'll make a motion in the night.
Second.
We have a motion by John and a second by Nellie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the mayor's report. I'd like to pass these over real quick. I want to thank Director Arity for putting this together for me. The beauty of social media is the fact that people can connect with other people. But part of the drawback on social media is the fact that people can put a lot of things out there that just aren't true. And through a discussion, and sometimes when, you know, when we're put in a position where we're around something every single day, we don't see growth, simply because it's just the way every single day is. And this kind of spurred from a discussion with a friend of mine. And for those of you council members that won't be with us, you know, I think you should take a lot of pride in the fact of, and those that have been here for quite a while, take a lot of pride in what's going on in this city. And we went back for the last five years, you know, because there would be, you know, statements of Toma doesn't grow, and we're stagnating, and things of that nature. But what I've provided for the council members is the growth of business in the last five years. Now, this is not comprehensive. This is just some things we've touched on. And trust me, I'm sure there are department heads that by the time I'm done with this are going to look at me and go, you could add this, and you can add this, and you can add this. But just things that have happened. In 2017, 18, Middlehaven came in. We did a multimillion-dollar expansion at Toro. Jimmy Johns came to Toma. Gunderson Health was built south of town. Baker's Table came in in the old Larkin General Store area. In 2019, Riverbank built. First Community Credit Union came to town. The third gen complex across the street. There was a Holland Truck Edition, and Doogie's Doggy Daycare opened. 2020 and 2021, I think we all know what happened. But nevertheless, we had Bubnick redevelopment and the storage units on Berry Avenue. In '22, things picked back up again with the Holiday Inn Express, Dwyer Transport being built, a multimillion-dollar Cardinal expansion. John, how much was that, did you say?
$64.
$64 million expansion by Cardinal Glass. Our town, Toma Assisted Living, the storage units on East Washington Street, storage units on Highway 21. There's redevelopment, and then redevelopment down at Denny's Auto. From amenities within the city, going to 2018 and '19. The public restrooms, the chamber building, Toma Health. The chamber building also, I believe that was a WEDC award for that. Am I happy? Oh, sorry. My bad. I thought I was loud enough. I apologize. But 2019, the Voist Out Cabin, put the new roof on. We've had the new streetlights, the walking trail extension. In 2020, the all-inclusive pier. 2021, the all-inclusive park, the Point Trail. In '22, the Winnebago Park. In '23, we've had Disc Golf, the Dog Park. The EMS building is being built, the Flair Avenue Complex, the ICE Center expansion, the Veterans Playground. If you go to housing, on average per year, you got 35 new homes, 23 duplexes, 51 multi-unit families, and eight mobile homes. Again, the city of Toma is growing. And as council members, you should all be very proud of the fact that you've been part of this. And I think as a city, we continue to grow. But, you know, growth in and of itself has to be tempered also. Too much growth too fast is not healthy for a city. I think many of our industries in town will tell you that, you know, hiring is still a difficult thing. And so while we want certain levels of growth, we still have to appease those that exist within our realm because we can't afford for anything to shut down. But once again, I just thought it was important as council members, you know, every year, we kind of cycle through new council members and, you know, to realize and recognize what it is that you've done. And I want to thank you for all of your help in this, all the department heads that had a part in this, and all the city employees that have added to the growth of Toma. So with that, we would move on. Unfortunately, Paul Martin is not with us this evening. So we will move on to the senior executive team.
We'll have the report in front of you. Kind of a laundry list of activities that we, as a group, attended or worked on. Some of the highlights are chamber board meeting that we went to, kind of updated the stakeholders on upcoming projects in the city. Attended the Pines and Monroe County Crime Stoppers ribbon cutting. Attended a soft opening for Brick's Sip House. I wish I could have got that one, but I didn't. Other business, we did have an emergency management committee. And we also facilitated an intergovernmental meeting with Monroe County Highway Department here in the chamber councils. They have a project coming up on ET, east of town, from industrial to Highway N. So they wanted our facility to bring in and have an informational meeting for those residents impacted. Also, Keen, from the last meeting, reached out to our city engineer to see if they could help us with citing that facility on the CA property. They did. They're in the process of helping us do that, along with that providing some estimates for the sewer and water, stormwater retention, those things that maybe may have been missed in the preliminary estimates, or at least get a pretty conservative estimate. They've always done a very good job in providing a good number to go off of and haven't let us astray with that. So, and in talking with them, in the end, they quoted $1,000, but said that they would donate that. So it was awfully nice of them to offer that up. They are also, it was mentioned about taking a field trip out there as an alternative. I asked them to drone that area so we could just have a video so people can understand the hurdles that we're going through out there. And that's included in that $1,000. They're in town doing quite a bit of droning for us with the projects already. So it's just another site for them to go to. And we have union negotiations will be starting, bargaining for the ambulance department. And we also have some training. I believe Molly attended a TID financing question and answer. Training, yeah, thanks. And then Shane is working on his licensing credits right now, too. So he's attending some dwelling color plumbing, HVAC schooling. Any questions or possible feedback on some of the changes that we've made to this agenda item?
And when you're doing the droning, have you considered the possibility of also taking the wellsite over there on 16 as a possible location?
I have some ideas in mind for that. A couple of hurdles with that is the white lines that are out there. And the utilities own that property, not the city. Those are the ones that come to mind right at the moment. So to answer your question, no, we are not considering that. I believe Director Protsch has met with NASA on an alternative site that was looked at by staff, and I think they're still digesting that.
I have some concerns that the site might be a little bit too small.
Oh, which site are you talking about?
The one on CA.
Okay. I believe that that would hopefully be covered in that request for the engineer to cite that on the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Okay, we'll move on to the public safety. Good evening, Tim.
Good evening, everyone. I try to be as short and sweet as I can here. Got both my monthly report and my annual report here this evening. So monthly report-wise, the fire department did respond March 15th, last Wednesday evening, to a structure fire on 519 Glendale Avenue. Entry team was made in right quickly, and we were able to knock it down. And unfortunately, there was quite a bit of smoke damage. So I'm not sure how the insurance company is going to respond to that. Hour after the call, it was noted by one of the firefighters that he twisted his knee coming out of the truck. So he reported that, and we went through the process. And I talk to him every day, seems to be getting through it. So just wanted to share that with you. As I indicated, we had our DSPS audit a month ago. And one of their recommendations was for a city the size of 10,000 people was to have an auto aid agreement with a neighboring department. And we took a good hard look at it over this conversation. And we presented this to Fort McCoy to see if they were interested, and they are. So they're taking it to their commander right now. So we would be requesting, if this all goes through, one engine company to the city of Toma in the event of a confirmed structure fire. So that's all they would respond to. So you got to remember, we're a paid-on-call volunteer department. So you never know how many people you can get. And this is something, this is a statewide thing. So they're kind of pushing everybody, especially when you've got municipalities the size that we do, to have at least an auto aid agreement. So we're working on that more to come, and I'll keep you posted on that. The building continues to move along. The brick-and-mortar crews are done on the inside. They're working on the outside. We just got to pray for some really good weather. I truly believe the building is going to be done on time. Early June, it's going to be asphalt and the outdoor stuff that needs to get done. So just pray for that. The bathrooms are being tiled, the drywall is pretty much all done. The temp power is off. If you drive by there tonight, you can actually see the building lit up out in the apparatus bay. So nice to see, so. Moving along here, EMS-wise, we had an open position for a full-time. We filled that. Dylan Iverson, he's going to be starting with us here within the next week or so. So we're back to full staff. We ran 218 calls last month. Pounding the transfers out, we're in the mid-90% on all the transfers. So we're doing a great job there, so everything's moving along. I told you all I would keep you up to date on the Medicaid, Medicare revalidation. It's tricky, but we're done. We signed the last papers two weeks ago, mailed everything in. And as far as we understand it, we're done, and we are revalidated, so every five years. So. Does anybody have anything on the annual or the monthly report? Any questions? Otherwise, I'll roll right into some bullet points on the annual report. Just kind of a tidbit here, the fire department responded to 335 calls last year. In 2002, for the 20 years, we have responded to over 500% increase for fire department service calls. So the city's growing, you can see it, more calls. Got to keep up with our staffing and our equipment and our training. It's not just fires anymore, it's a little bit everything else. So again, that's quite an increase over 20 years. So we did have two structure fires that were deemed total losses last year. On a good note, we have had no fire injuries on any fire scenes or any training over the past years. Just as a reminder, we haven't had a fire-related death in the city for 41 years. So every year, I got to throw out that big, huge shout-out to the businesses at Toma that support our fire safety education programs. They support the entire Toma School District. And I can't thank them enough for what they do. This would add probably close to $15,000 onto my budget every year that I have to come and ask you folks for. And everybody throws in and helps out. And we had contact with over 5,000 students and adults last year. And then we also have extra overflow stuff that we use for national night out and other things throughout the year. So we did perform 1,164 inspections last year, and we met the standards for Department of Safety and Professional Services. So we're on page with that. The one big thing that I'm very, very proud of the last year was that we became a Class III city for the first time ever for our ISO rating. So that was a lot of work, and now I'm going to chop off the next block when I can do it here. So we're working on it. So the department received $15,500 in grants last year. I always throw out there, you know, if it isn't for the, it starts with the firefighters, the families, the businesses, allowing our firefighters to go, the city would not be in the condition that it is. It would literally cost, I know you guys know this, it costs us about $1.4, $1.5 million on our operational budget in order to have a minimum-staffed, full-time fire department. And, you know, again, we're pulling people away from their families, their jobs. And I cannot thank them enough on behalf of the city and myself that they allow us to do this, and hopefully we can keep it going for many years. EMS-wise, we ran 3,245 calls last year, just under nine per day. Again, we're at full staff. We put on, it wasn't in your report, 136,318 miles last year. So I don't know how many times around the world that is, but it was plenty, about 10,000 more than the previous year. So you guys seen all the financials that I had on the annual report. We're in very good condition. The service cleared $791,000 estimated last year. And we got a cash fund balance of about $2.3 million. We're in very good shape. Just want to throw out there again, Deputy Chief Robarch wrote $155,000 in grants for the ambulance service, that big one that the state released last year that helped out the department very much. So I thank them every time I think about it. So again, my final ending here is I thank all of you guys for, you know, the work that you guys did to help us get this building going. Everybody is so very excited about it, and we can't wait to move in. We just need some dry weather to get the property dried up so we can get the rest of the project completed here on time. So anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Yes?
When are we going to get to see a site visit of that?
Anytime you want. I've offered it anytime you want. Just give me a call.
Call you?
Just give me a call, yep. I mean, preferably it would be between 8:00 and 5:00-ish because they lock the gates up and everything. So, yeah.
Is there any safety equipment?
Hard hat and I got it. Just, you know, no open-to-a-shoes or anything like that, so. But no, I'd be glad to. Almond took a tour the other day, and anybody else, John's took one, so.
I just wanted to point out, when you talk about the ISO rating, just so everybody knows, that when that goes to a three, that actually saves you money on your homeowner's insurance.
And it's a... And it's a, it's a really big deduction for large businesses and industries. And again, you know, in the future, when other businesses are looking to go, hey, are we going to go to Lisbon or Sparta or Toma or whatever, they, they look at that because that's a big cost savings to them.
So is that something that you should contact our owner?
It should be almost an automatic thing. You know, you can, you know, sometimes, sometimes it takes a little bit of time before it goes through the system, but yeah.
Yeah, it, it goes into, it's kind of your rating is based on your zip code, but it will actually naturally make that adjustment for you.
And unfortunately, every year, insurance goes up, so I don't know if you can see that big of a difference or not, but anyway. Any other questions?
Is there any way to put a number on that?
There really isn't because there's so many variables that come into play with it. But, but it does, there is a difference between when I worked in the insurance industry, you know, if there was an ISO rating of a four versus a three, there was a definitive dollar value difference in your annual.
So if somebody wanted to dig into it, they probably could figure out per 10,000 or $1,000 worth of insurance.
Yeah, because it goes to, it goes to response time, it goes to, you know.
That's, that's the big one. I mean, if you're 10, 15 minutes out from a department, you know, that's when you're really, that's when you really start seeing those increases in your fire insurance.
Yeah.
What was the rating before?
Was it four?
Four.
So it was another one?
Yep.
Two or three?
I remember when we were six, and then we've continually dropped it down, and to try to get it to a two is going to be, I'm not going to say impossible because I'm a fighter for it, and I'm going to do everything I can, but we've got a ways to go to get to that, so.
Faster trucks.
Huh?
Just kidding.
Yeah, we're going to mull over the top of the public safety building that will shoot water at every angle around town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the library. Good evening, Miss Herman. Cleaning supplies?
Cleaning supplies.
Over on Glendale.
Some people might tell you that I don't clean, but don't listen to them. I have people to clean for me. Okay, so hello, everybody. February checkout of eBooks, 1,796. Physical checkouts, 4,194, giving us a total of 5,990, 90 items checked out from your Toma library. Children's department, we have ongoing programs, but it doesn't hurt to hear about them again. Monday night, comfy, cozy storytime, that's at 6:30. Tuesday, storytime at 10:00, and at 2:00, board games at 5:30. Wednesday, baby time at 10:00, Lego Club at 5:00. Thursday, we have, on March 30th, we have family movie night at 6 o'clock. March 30th, 6 o'clock, family movie night, Paddington Bear. If you haven't seen it, it's pretty good. Saturday, board games from 10 till 4, and that's for everybody. In the adult department, our current program, Hot Reads for Cold Nights, and that only goes until March 31st, so you need to get over there right away. So tomorrow, 9:00 AM, you're there, you check out a book, you put in a entry, and you may win a gift card from a local merchant. Coming events for the adult department, this Thursday, we will be showing The Fableman's. April 20th, we will be showing A Man Called Otto. Some of you might have read that book, A Man Called Uva, but they changed the title because they didn't think Americans would be able to say "Uva," so it's A Man Called Otto. Anyway, it's a very good book. We have it at the library. I highly recommend it. We are going to be doing, from April 1st to April 30th, we're going to be doing a blind date with a book. And I have some books here for those of you who are interested. You can get a custom bookmark between March, excuse me, April 23rd to April 29th. That's National Library Week, so if you'd like, if you send us, if you come in and check out a blind book, a blind date book, we will make a custom bookmark for you. You'll send us a picture of whatever, and we'll make a bookmark for you, laminated, decorated. Anywho, I think that's it. Any questions? Nothing?
I have a real frivolous question.
Please.
How pleased were you with the Dewey Decimal Question at the Family's First Studio?
Were you there?
I was there, yeah.
I didn't see you!
And I saw you there, and I'm like, oh, man, that table's totally...
I know. We had two librarians there with degrees and everything, yeah. People were looking at us hard. They had some very hard questions, though. I thought they had some very hard questions. It was a good time. Nothing else? Okay, thank you very much. Oh, take a book.
Thank you.
Do you go back for your return?
No.
Okay, these are to go.
These are to go.
At this point, I'll take that date. Okay, senior disabled services?
You say that every year.
One of these years is going to be my year.
Good evening.
Good evening, Pamela.
The Senior Center has always had an unofficial code of conduct. Now we have a written code of conduct, which I have been reading to groups at the Senior Center, and it will be in the newsletter in April, so it will be coming to you. Good Friday Potluck is coming up. April is, Easter is early, so if you want to sign up for a potluck on Good Friday, contact me, and we're going to eat around 11:00, 11:15, somewhere in there after the music is done. The Senior Center will then close on Good Friday at 12:30 after the potluck. Basket weaving classes have been going really good at the Senior Center. We are offering our third class in April, on April 3rd, and it is filled. She limits it to 12, and now we're taking lists for May. So it only costs $5, and you take home an awesome basket. Next month, just to give you a heads up, maybe put on your calendars, the same week as City Council next month. On that Thursday after City Council, on the 20th, is our volunteer appreciation social. That's the volunteer week that week. And so on Thursday after bingo, we will have the social. And I wanted to highlight, oh, I should do the numbers, just because you're numbers people usually. In February, we had 1,626-plus people, and last year in February, we had 1,039-plus. So we were growing, I'm seeing new faces, it's, it's great. And I wanted to touch on, I'm starting a pals class, that's physical activity for lifelong success, and that will start in April, and I'll do the pre-evales the week of April 10th. And then the next week on Monday, we start the 10-week course, and then it follows with 10 weeks of coaching, and those 10 weeks include two booster classes in it. And so it's a commitment, but it is good for endurance, strength, balance, and flexibility. Balance being the key, I really hit that one hard because falls are a catastrophe for us, older people, so. And then I'm also starting a class called Stand Up and Move More. It is not an exercise class, although it sounds like it. It is more about getting up away from, for me, would be more getting up away from a desk and not sitting long periods of time, or for somebody who's home and sits all evening watching TV, that's not good for us. It increases...
Wait, 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 that's not good for us?
Sitting for long periods of time increases heart disease, increases diabetic risk, increases certain cancers, and increases ultimately, if you let it go, early death. And so Stand Up and Move is a behavior, changing our own behaviors. It's a four, four-class course, two hours each class, for us to have choices and educate ourselves and, and work on changing some of our behaviors. And there's a booster class four weeks after the course is done also for that. So those are coming up in April. And then I just want to say, the paper came in the mail today, Monroe County Herald, and on the back page, I think it's back page?
No, back page.
It's a nice article that was written on our line dancing class at the Senior Center. And then they, they mentioned at the end of the article about the basket weaving and some other things, but it's very nice. The picture is nice and everything. Take a gander at it if you can. Any questions on my report that you have?
Thank you, Pamela.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the Chamber Convention Visitors Bureau. Good evening, Christina.
Good evening, Michael. It's been a busy couple months. First of all, I wanted to thank Tim for allowing me to join in on one of the fire tours that they were able to do of the new building, was a couple months ago, but it was very enlightening and really interesting, something surely to be proud of. We did have our banquet last month. Thank you to those of you that attended. We had about 370 in attendance, many of which registered the week of, which was always very exciting, so we encourage people to please register in advance. We had two people, one table in particular that wanted to register at about 3:15 that afternoon, and we're like, we just can't, we just can't, unfortunately. I think I reported last month, we've had a couple issues with our building regarding some water leaks. Issue number one has been completely corrected, finally with the exception of I have to repaint the drywall. We did find a second leak today somewhere, I'm not exactly sure where that's originating from, so I'm talking with Kirk and figuring out where that'll come from, but we'll report on that later. We are moving forward with doing an assessment of our wayfinding signage. If you're not familiar with wayfinding signages, the signs that tell you, you know, hospital this way, chamber of commerce this way, city buildings this way, fire department this way. So that project hasn't been done in, in my time here, and as you've mentioned before, we've had significant growth and changes in recent years, and so it's time to kind of reassess that. So we've had a couple meetings with different vendors, Van De Willem Associates included, to kind of figure out where that is going to go with that assessment. We finally booked our last band for DTN yesterday, very excited about that. We're hoping to make some announcements very soon on those. Sponsorship is open for that, if you're looking for opportunities to sponsor that event. Thank you to those that were able to attend the ribbon cutting at The Pines. We have another one coming up on April 5th, which is at Kikibu Valley Roofing. If you have not noticed, that redevelopment, for lack of a better term, on the south end of town, I urge you to drive by or stop, stop by there on April 5th, that afternoon, they're doing an open house after the noon ribbon cutting, but they've done significant improvements to that property. It's very pleasant to look at at this point. We continue to work with Fort McCoy on the Military Spouse Task Force. We have been working with them, DWD, Workforce Connections, Western Technical, to figure out how we can attract the military spouses for jobs in our region and what that looks like, learning a lot about the many layers of retake that that includes. But they're wanting to be connected with, within our communities for, for jobs and careers, so we're looking at how that looks like, and we continue to explore opportunities. We, Megan and I recently went to the Wisconsin Governors Conference on Tourism, just always trying to learn about what new opportunities are available, what's new and trending. I will be attending the Mid-America Chamber Executive Conference coming up in May. Again, just continuing to do what's best for our communities and to kind of glean off of others in the arena. Lastly, we have our registration open for our Career and Job Fair, which is May 19th, for those that would be interested in getting ahead, in front of, excuse me, between 400 and 700 high school students with your career opportunities. A lot of it is educating the kids on the opportunities that are available here locally in Toma, and it's anywhere from manufacturing to retail to healthcare to military services. So there's a very wide range of industries that are there. We typically have about 75 to 80 business participants. And then we do encourage towards the end of that for parents and grandparents to also attend, so they are able to understand the opportunities available for not only their students, but potentially them as well. So we just want to continue educating the public on what's available here in Toma. Any questions for me?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
On those military spouses, is that, does that appear to be a fairly large pool of people that we may be able to tap?
It fluctuates. So what we're kind of hearing from Fort McCoy is they have, you know, spouses that move to the area and face, you know, different barricades to employment, childcare being one of them, opportunity being one, misconception of, you know, usually the spouses that come along with enlisted persons are very well-educated and have professional-level degrees, and the opportunities that are, they're presented with aren't necessarily compatible with their education and experience level. So I think we're still trying to do, and I think even Fort McCoy's still trying to understand what those numbers are. But we were approached to put this task force together in conjunction with Western Technical and the workforce agencies in the area, and Fort McCoy has sent representatives. We've actually just had commander and deputy commander at the last meeting, so still trying to understand what, what that audience looks like.
Because it's someone trying to put those numbers together, because it seems like you would need those numbers to see how significant this is and to what magnitude you're going to need an organization to handle.
And it's a task force, so it's a temporary thing to identify currently what the issues are and what, what it looks like. So the task force is identifying that, that's what we're doing right now.
Okay, so hopefully coming out of this whole task?
Hopefully.
Why, it should. Work if you don't know how many people there are.
And we're just one of, about 15 at a table, so. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
And moving on to the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion regarding the approval of minutes from February 14th, 2023, special beer and wine permit application by Monroe County Support Services for Budweiser Dairyland Super National Truck and Tractor Pull on June 22nd through 24th, 2023, special beer and wine license application by Monroe County Support Services for Monroe County Fair on July 26th through 30th, 2023, Monroe County Support Services extending hours of operation at the Monroe County Fair Beer Garden on February, Friday, July 28th and Saturday, July 29th, 2023, at Recreation Park, Toma PD Suppression Device Reimbursement Budget Amendment, and the February 28th, 23, 2023 Cash and Investments Report.
Who to approve?
Second.
We have a motion from Sean, a second from Nellie. Any discussion?
Yes, would it be appropriate to amend the suppression resolution to include reimbursement on the part that just occurred last week?
We'll bring forward a new budget amendment when that one is received.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the committee as a whole, I would entertain first reading of the ordinance amending ordinance section 2-57 of the City of Toma Municipal Code. Waive the first reading, sorry.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion to waive the second reading of the ordinance amending ordinance section 2-57 of the City of Toma Municipal Code.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion regarding the adoption of the ordinance amending ordinance section 2-57... Entertain a motion regarding the adoption of the ordinance amending ordinance section two dash five fifty-seven of the City of Toma Municipal Code.
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eight, the resolution for payment of monthly bills. I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All the... Motion, Zabinski. And second, I guess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, Winnebago Trail, Park Trail Edition. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So I wanted to, to ask a little bit, so I was looking at, at the notes yesterday and we had a lot of conversation about this. And kind of what I'm curious about on this item was, it was a five-to-one vote at the Parks and Rec thing. And we heard in Lumont, you were the, the one no vote. So we heard a lot about why not to do this project. But I don't know if we really heard why Parks, the Parks and Rec Committee wanted to do this. Does there, I don't know, Joe, if you have any information or like what was the conversation? Because obviously five other people on that group thought.
I, I think you're making a good point. And I think it's something that we as council members need to start looking at, that when we are a member of a committee, part of our job of being that member of the committee is to bring to this council what was said at that, regardless of what our personal feelings are. Part of our job is to bring the information from that meeting here so that it can, because it's already been vetted there. So to bring to us the information that we aren't necessarily going to get. So for the council members that are members of the Parks and Recs, you know, I think that's imperative that we share what the positive thoughts were on this.
And who is, uh?
I believe Dean and Lumont are.
Well, the committee, I guess the thoughts were safety. And not having parking. And parking got involved in this, and I'm not sure how parking relates, but Director Prass was concerned that during large events or multi-events in the park, people are just going to park wherever they want to park and they're going to give... Right now, it's designed to have a blocking trail marked off of the expanded road that we designed into the project, an eighteen-foot wide roadway instead of a twelve or fourteen or whatever a lane would be, so we could mark off a trail. So he was concerned that people are just going to pull off to the side and block that walking lane.
Okay.
Well, so a separate one provides a totally...
The inability to do that.
Yes. And then by putting one between the roadway and the lake, we're kind of designing a buffer zone that we're hoping that people are going to stop and not go across that and park to kind of define the area where they can park. But we really don't want to park in there at all. So that's where my whole... I have trouble defending this because I have so many points against it. And, and the vetting that we did in the design of this, but we vetted this at many meetings and never was an eighteen-foot wide road with an additional trail ever in that conversation. So I'm...
So what was the five-to-one vote on that?
To move forward now adding a trail besides the eighteen-foot wide road. Not using, using the roadway just as a roadway now.
Okay.
And adding a whole new, a trail, a two, it's about two hundred yards. And I'll speak on the other side in a minute. You asked for positives. And that, that was kind of the positive part of it.
Okay.
Joe? I, I thought about it last night. And it's like maybe two hundred yards from there. We had some pretty concerned citizens on the road that's right there by the lake. And we had them get off the street. Because you don't, you gotta have a sidewalk. You don't want you in the street. So I sort of thought to be consistent. And that park is busier than that street probably. So I thought, maybe it does make sense to, we need, there could be good intentions to have the wider road at the time, you know, when we first designed it. But now that we already had these other meetings and we decided that, you know, you can't be in the street on the road and everyone go to a sidewalk. I just thought, that's even busier probably in the park. I thought, maybe it makes sense. And I like the idea of the natural barrier, you know.
What Joe's referring to is that Public Works, anytime we're going to be putting curb and gutter in anywhere, which is going to add sidewalk to places that didn't have sidewalk in the past, there's a general resistance to that. And down in that very particular area, one of the discussions we had with the homeowners who did not want to put sidewalk on lakefront properties, one of the discussions was the fact, and one of the points was the fact that getting people off from the road and onto a sidewalk. So if you're pushing a stroller, if you've got somebody handicapped or you've got somebody walking, they're not walking. And one of the suggestions that the people made in that neighborhood was to put a bike lane and a walking lane on the road and eliminate any sidewalk. And again, in, in that department meeting, it was expressed to them that that is not enough safety, that pushing people up onto a sidewalk, yes, it's about congruency throughout the city and having sidewalks throughout the city. But here we are, less than a quarter of a mile from one area, telling them that a bike lane and a sidewalk lane is not acceptable and won't do it. But now we want to tell them in a park it is.
This is what adds a couple hundred yards to the trail, but it's still ending. And you've still got to walk through the street to get anywhere. It's just a matter of where the trail starts. Does it start where their parking is? If they want to park and get on the trail? This is just another hundred yards that doesn't really go to anywhere.
Part of it was talked about green space. We would, by building trails, we would lose some green space in between, um, between the road, I guess, the trail and then the other trail in between there. That's kind of how I understood it, that we were going to lose green space there someplace. And the green space, we're going to picnic tables, we're going to go in that area. That was another thing that we discussed.
The, I think, you know, you know, I'll go to the drivers, I've instructed. My concern is that I think the concern about parking can be nullified by putting up no parking signs. And again, you know, then, then we put the onus upon the police department to enforce that. But the thing that concerns me is that if you have cars parked there and you have lots of activity down there and you don't have a defined sidewalk for people to walk in. Now, it does not mean just because you have a defined sidewalk that people are going to walk it. But if people are encouraged to walk towards the road now, if you had cars and their path of travel is, is now going to be going down to a road, now you're going to have people walking out from between cars, which on a curb increases the danger exponentially to people walking in that area. You're now increasing the, the risk, you know, again, we don't have a traffic study, but I'd be willing to bet that you're at least two to three times more traffic in that particular area than you are on the side streets in that area. And pushing people to walk on a road as people are turning a curve, as the, the, the usage of phones and so on and so forth, it continues to increase. You're just increasing the potential of risk to a point that I think just isn't worth it. It's not worth it when you've got people with strollers and, and kids and so on and so forth on that particular curve, when you could keep them up on a sidewalk.
So where do we draw the line? We could actually cut it across and come across in front of the playground equipment and keep that from walking even down in there, because that's where all the traffic is.
You, you put a crosswalk in. You almost create a, you know, something of that nature. I just...
Where it ends is just going to be where boats are backing in, more traffic and stuff. We're just encouraging people to walk down into more of a mess. And then there's nothing to go from there. Then you're in the street. So that's why I, I kind of originally voted for this, because I think it's, you know, add more walking space. But then, but the more I thought about it, we're just leading them to a spot that I think could make it more dangerous.
Okay. Normally I wouldn't do this, but since I do have a member of the Parks and Rec Commission here, I am going to allow you to speak.
Yeah, I was going to say she could have spoke in her original during this time.
A couple of things that, that I've spent a lot of time down there today.
I'm sorry, Dee, could you use?
I'm sorry.
You're okay. Just tilt it down a little bit.
I spent a lot of time down at the park today, looking at and taking pictures of how things are currently set up down there. A couple of the things that, you know, going in front of the bench and coming down between the, the water and the road looked to be about the safest. And then in front of the deck down there, there is a sidewalk there. And I talked to members of the community today also, and got a lot of really cool ideas. Nobody wants a speed bump in the City of Toma because of plows and things like that. And even in the park area, that, you know, it would be a pain for Public Works, I think, or whoever does the, the plowing, you know, during the winter. But I've had numerous people suggest that they have the, um, the speed bumps that you can put out like during the summer and then pack them up during the winter, which is something that we could do. It could go right down to where that sidewalk is that comes off the deck, put a crosswalk in there and a couple of speed bumps, removable speed bumps in before you get to that. So people slow down. And then, you know, if we, if we needed more, we could look at the, like the, the flashing lights that we have. Although I think that would be an added expense that I don't know would be necessary at this time to go ahead and do that. So I don't know. Those are ways that, you know, some people have tried to problem solve getting over to the playground, you know. And to me, that, those ideas made sense, that it would be a safe, safe way to, to transition from the walking trail to the park or anything else. I, to me, it just, it does my heart good to see families utilizing the trail with the kids on the bikes and the trucks and, you know, whole families out doing it. And heaven knows, we've got enough sedentary things going on that, you know, to find ways to increase the activity, I think is really good. I'm a rubbernecker. I am down at that lake several times a day. When the pelicans come in and everything else, I'll do, I'll do drive-bys several times a day to watch them feed and things like that. And I know, I might get a little distracted once in a while. And, you know, well, my, things are migrating and stuff. I know there's a lot of people that go down there. And, you know, I don't know. I, I think it's one of the best things that we've got going in the City of Toma. I also believe that for someone my age, on the days that I can walk that trail and out there walking it, and I see other people doing it too. I've met a lot of people on the trail.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Dee.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead.
Maybe, maybe sending this back to the park board for more discussion. You know, different ways of, of making this work.
Okay.
You know, and they would kind of vet it some more on that one section of what they want to do. Because it sounds like that trail just ends there and you're still going to be hitting traffic. So...
Is your microphone on?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
So, I mean, that's something that we can talk of, maybe send it back to them and they can, you know, think about more ideas to make that part work.
Joe, go ahead.
Just for a time sensitivity, that's why it was kind of brought up, because of the community members like Dee Dee and those that use the trail. The reason why we're trying to push it forward now is the, if you've been down there, it's, it's like I talked about last night. So I, I think they want to get in there in the month of April, May to try to get that project done. So that's why, you know, we're trying to push it forward now for those that want the trail system to continue along the shoreline. So, you know, as a, as a Parks Rec, like I talked about last night, we've got two main users that go through there. And, you know, I, I learned a lesson on that, on how many people like to drive through Winnebago Park. And we had lengthy discussions on, do we not even have a road? It was the initial plan. And it's just a walkway to connect the new parking to the point area. But we know that people love driving through that, that can't walk or like to get out of their vehicle to use the trail. They love driving through there to check if the ice is thick enough, who's fishing, this and that. So as a park director here, I'm just trying to make two user groups happy. The ones that drive through the park and the families that walk through the park. So that's why, you know, I'm hearing it from both sides, the users that love the trail and the ones that like to drive through it. And it's just a time sensitive matter that, yeah, we could bring it forward in three, four years after we see how it goes, but it's mud. And I'd hate to go back in there five years after we say, you know, the, the road wasn't working. So that's just why I brought it forward and, and listened to community members. So that's where we're kind of at. So I'd like to kind of decision now so we can move forward with the project and kind of, like I said last night, move on to the next park project, because this one's been lagging for five, six years. We, we had it planned and then COVID shut the funding down for this project. We went and got that big grant for the boat, boat launch, you know, with the DNR. I'd like to just kind of close this project down. It's been about six years into work, into work. So this is just kind of last thing in the time to do. It would be now with the dirtwork zone.
And I understand the concern, and, and I understand where you're coming from, that the sidewalk's going to end somewhere. There's no doubt it's going to end. But one of the things I think needs to go into consideration is that that sidewalk is going to end somewhere. And what we're given the option of here is ending that sidewalk down in an area that has a natural crosswalk to it. Or ending the sidewalk on a curve and then making people walk two hundred yards on a road that people are going to be turning on a curve. And as we talk about rubbernecking, so for that two hundred yards, instead of being up in a more protected area, they're down in a more vulnerable area, because that sidewalk is going to end somewhere anyway. But if we took that sidewalk down to where there's a natural crosswalk, you're putting a much safer variant down there.
I have a...
Oh, you go ahead.
I have a comment to make. I was down there, took Dixie down there for a walk today. And I did meet with Dee Dee. And I went down there and I took a look. And as I'm walking the dog on that road, there's not, yes, there's cars that come down there and they pass you, but there is really no room to just walk if you're walking a dog. You know, dog, dog darts out and what have you. But I guess for a safety feature or from a standpoint of view, personally, I would like to see something off to the side or something for people to walk down that would be a lot more safer to utilize.
Is there, I don't know if this is for Joe or maybe Kirk, since this would kind of be your realm as well. Is there a cost savings realized by the city that if we were to do this project now, that we'd be saving money on like site preparation or something where we wouldn't have to remove like turf or topsoil or things like that?
Slightly. So our plan is to redo the entrance off of Brandon all the way into where this, we would connect up to the new. So we'll be down there, June-ish. And that is part of the plan is cost estimate from Public Works to do the actual asphalting of the trail. About six, seven thousand dollars is what we estimated. A little bit with permitting for erosion control, having those things in place. We're going to capitalize a little bit on that. Is it a huge amount? Not necessarily, but it is, you know, if you look at a twenty thousand dollar project, you know, maybe a thousand bucks.
Okay. Thank you.
So Kirk, I have a question for you. If, if we were to not do this and let it get grassed over and everything, would the city be able to do the whole project in the future? Wouldn't we be able to tear that out and lay, lay that down in its entirety?
We could, yes. Yep. It was, from our standpoint, we're going to be down there doing other things. And I didn't want to commit to that portion for the subgrading with...
No, I understand that. So we already have a bid for the subgrading. But we could actually do it all in the future. We, we vetted this whole project so much in the beginning, and now we're going to... and now we're, we're gonna veer and I don't, and without even having tried what we designed in it in the first place. So I'm just trying this and we can probably save a little bit of money. It probably won't cost $14,000 for the city to do the subgrade in the future.
Yeah, it just takes away from all the projects. That's what it, you know, it's just that balancing act. So to answer your question, yes, we can in the future. And I guess my, I, I try to stay a little bit neutral on this because this is Joe's-
Well, I'm not asking you to.
No, but it's Joe's realm and the Parks and Rec Commission. So we'll, we'll help support them on whatever we can do. But as far as how they want it, you know, done, that's, that's where we'd like to draw the line, I guess. There, answer.
Yes. Okay. Any further discussion?
One, I made the comment yesterday too, like the one thing I do like about the sidewalk is, I don't know, people pulling off in the grass and parking like they always do. But it gets busy down there, people park. Especially in your shelters and stuff, they park and it gets pretty full in there and they're all parking, not parallel, usually parked in the grass. But during the summer, I've seen people actually pull all the way to the lake in that grass right now. So if there's a sidewalk there, I think naturally people wouldn't park on the middle of the sidewalk. Maybe it would keep them back so you preserve the green space along the lake in case you want to put some picnic tables down there or something or something that I might help keep them constrained.
Just to bring up the speed, as we're talking about the Winnebago with the-
Yeah.
Uh, we've had a motion and a second and had some discussion on it. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add.
What's the motion?
The motion was to approve to put the sidewalk in or put the trail in.
Okay.
I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add because we're kind of trailing at the end of this right now.
And I think, I guess to be fair for complete list, last night, the recommendation from the PD whole was that the motion did not carry, just so we're completely upfront about it. So.
Yep, it did not carry, but the motion tonight is to-
To, yeah.
To carry.
Right note, yeah. John was the motion.
Yeah, it was the same last night, but then got moved down.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. So with that, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so all the ayes, please raise your hand. And then the negatives, please, the nays, please raise your hand. A three.
As I said last night, you're a ten, the nays a different vote.
Okay, five to three, the vote passes. Moving on, entertain a motion regarding the request of usage of ARPA funds for lighting upgrades at Recreation Park. I believe there was a handout here.
Yeah, we questioned this last night. Is there, are there some numbers we can look at to help us decide whether we were to, the statement was just made, well, it's a really good project. Well, we as a council, you know, everybody comes in and says, well, really good projects. We need some kind of substantiation of why we're gonna do that. So we asked for some kind of numbers.
Numbers. Do we, uh, well, first of all, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second. So we have a motion.
I read it.
Motion and a second. Then we'll go into discussion on it, please.
Can I ask if you have a dollar amount? Was he approved for the motion?
Is it, is there a dollar amount tied to that?
Uh, it would be John's, the-
I think it was $36,000 coming from the cell tower account, I believe.
For what project are you looking at now?
The lighting.
We're requesting ARPA funds for lighting on recreation park.
It's the 36307.
Okay, I would open to discussion then.
Molly? ARPA will cover the, uh, the $36 per dollar under the rule, correct?
Yes. Yep, they opened up. So basically any operating expense within the city qualifies.
And that would be a one-time payment?
Yep.
We'll pay that total?
We have those funds available to us now, so we would just use them to pay any costs associated with this project.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, um, so Joe had a handout. I also did, was able to look at the project that we did at the PD. That started in December and took actual numbers from the bills. And what it really comes down to is about, at the top end, 2,600 would be my estimate annual savings, 2,200 on the low end. So roughly between 6.15 to seven years return on investment is what we're anticipating on that. And we're actually seeing that right now. So that would be an example. I'll take Richard first.
Would you repeat those numbers again?
Which ones?
What you just quoted as far as saving at the police department.
So we're at the high end, 2,600 annual. At the low end, we're projecting 2,200. The total cost was 16,000 for that project and it comes into right around 6.15 to seven years is my estimate for a return on investment. Just catch up to you.
So you answered it with how much was the total project.
Okay.
The other question I have, that doesn't include the cost of an electrician to go up and change the bulbs at a high level like at the recreation park, right?
And at the PD too. You know, we would have Scott or maintenance, you know, replacing those. So, so there's back costs that's in there. For the PD, that's probably about the only, you know, the maintenance part of it that would add to that or lower, lower that return.
And then the other question was these, they don't make the current bulbs anymore unless they're in China. That's it. So, so the ones we would be putting in, which lasts a lot longer are, are they?
Correct. And I have Mr. Paul Steele from Recreation Park here. He's the one that kind of got this project going and met with Mr. Van Norman out there to see how we could update our facility out there. And if you've been around the tractor pole weekend or the fair, I mean, every year we go through a couple grand just because these quartz lights go out and we need an update in a spur of moments. So I think this is gonna help our future for these big events and so forth. And Paul's got more information if you need. You know, he's, he's been meeting with them and we met with them again today. So, I mean, we have a lot of lights that don't even work out there that we want to get upgraded to old quartz light and you can see how much kilowatts we'll be saving if we update the facility. So.
Joe?
Yes.
When are you looking to replace those before tractor pole?
Well, we'll probably, Paul will work on a schedule with the electrician we find, get the supplies ordered and try to do the outdoor ones first, the ones that we need for those outdoors events this summer. And then we can plug away on the indoor facilities. And obviously with the ice hockey center, we'll want to get that prior to them making ice. So we get the lifts in there and change those lights out. And then continue with the exhibit building because of gymnastics and then move our way down to the recreation building because that's, uh, you know, it's busy, but we have times where we can get a lift in there. So we'll work out a schedule. So with that.
So it's kind of a six month to a year project to get through everything?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a work in progress. We just want to get the funds so we can get the stuff ordered and order all the materials at once. I think that's in there as well with the rebates and the savings if we can get the lights ordered at once and then plug away out there on updating it. But the outdoor lighting does need a lot of upgrade. You get a lot of different concerns and complaints during those events when things go out. And, you know, Chief Addlers here, we had a, you know, a little incident with a light last year that they come and say the date during the tractor pole. So I'm when the light falls. So, you know, safety's the thing with these old quartz have been there probably, you know, since some of those light poles have been put out in the pit area out back. So.
I can say personally, I switched all my properties to ALPA. You say, I mean, I could tell I say money every month on them. So nice your light too.
I have a question for Joe.
Yes.
Okay, this handout that you just gave us.
Yep.
Shows a $6 per hour savings.
Correct.
Based on the 12 cents a kilowatt. That figures out to about $9,000. How many, are all of these lights on 24 or dusk till dawn or some of them on only when we have major events?
Uh, somewhere on dusk till dawn, all are backside to the grandstands around the buildings, some security lights for the parking areas and a lot of those need updating because we have the major events. I think we figured that today about, what was it about months' worth of lights being on the whole time with the tractor pole fair, rodeo and every juice pumped up for that. So we figured with that about savings of about 4,300 just calculating that. So we, we figured with the kilowatt savings and the 12 cents we, that we worked with is about around six grand a year is what we're kind of looking at. It's just such a beast out there. We have three, three amp meters. We have, you know, we have over 15 meters out there. Get charged different kilowatts for the lighting out there. So it's just tough to go through. We did look at the bills, but just a lot of, lot of different equations for Recreation Park. It's not one meter, it's multiple meters at different charges for the ice center, you know, the track lights, the midway lights and so forth. So I don't know if that answers your question, but we figured about a month's worth of, the lights will be on all the time, about 30 days a year. And we're talking midway lights, track lights, all the lights out back to the campers and pullers and stuff like that. So outside that be our buildings and security lighting.
Okay, we have a motion, a second and a fourth to approve. Any further discussion?
Last thing I'll say, it's not a question, just wanted to commend Kirk and Joe. I know there's a lot of information to put together before tonight and thanks for having something that we could talk about. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, um, you know, we appreciate the feedback. We just haven't supplied this information on other projects. So we just did realize that that was what you guys were looking for. So we'll try to do a better job in the future.
It seems like you usually give us like a, a number of your payback though, even though you don't present the actual facts in front of us that prove that. You, you usually have some kind of number. This one was just a little bit incomplete. It was, as I mentioned before, I don't want to be redundant, but well, it's a really good project. Well, I don't know, our responsibility is to make decisions based upon a little bit more than it's a really good project.
And, and honestly, we probably took that for granted a little bit. So like I said, we'll do better in the future and make sure that we're supplying all those numbers that you're, you're looking for. So.
Even though it is a really good project.
It's great.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion regarding the approval of the new lease for the Toma Youth Hockey Association?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Yarriton, second from Blen. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
If I, if I may, sorry.
No, you may not.
Sorry, I know. I just wanted to highlight one change that didn't get covered last night. I just wanted to make sure. Obviously you all have the marked up copy showing any changes. But in order to make this project eligible for bonding, we had to strike the clause that the club would be responsible for any shortfall in room tax dollars collected. Um, that, in the current rate environment, that saves the city significant money to be able to include this project in our bonding versus going out for a state trust fund loan. It's about a two to two and a half percent difference in interest rate. And since we had never in the 20 years on the previous project ever gone after the hockey association to make up any differences, the only year I could find that we did probably have a shortfall was in 2020 during the COVID year. We are thinking that it is very beneficial to the city to strike that and take advantage of its bonding eligibility. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone did see that in there, that that was being stripped from the agreement. So.
Thank you. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
A vote? Motion carries. Entertain a motion regarding the election tally for the February 21st, 2023 election.
They're accurate, I hope.
They are, I promise.
Most do approve the tally.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
A vote? Motion carries. An entertaining motion to adjourn the closed session for Sault Ste. Wisconsin Station, May 25th. Unfortunately, the council regarding the strategy of getting out of that respect for the issue, which it is, that are likely to become involved.
So move second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will adjourn the closed session. Anybody else to take a bathroom?